Okay, Mr. Mayor, we are all.
All right. Welcome, folks, to our meeting for August 24th at 7:10 PM for a city council meeting. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Jimmy Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Rob Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Jasmine Cobble.
Here.
Councilmember George Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Tammy Grimes.
Here.
Mayor Jason Larry.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a special guest this evening, folks, that's going to do our invocation. And I see him online here. If I mispronounce your name, sir, I apologize in advance. It's Rajan Zed?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you for being with us today, sir. And the floor is now yours.
Thank you, Mayor Larry and the council for having me. I shall be reading from ancient Hindu scriptures, some as old as 1500 BCE, and then interpret in English. Om Bhur Bhuvahasvaha, Tat Savitur Vare Niam, Bargo Deva Siddhimahi, Diyo Yo Na Prichodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme, who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Sadgamaam, Tamsoma Jyotir Gamaam, Mrityur Mamratham Gamaam. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Tasma Dasa Kta Statham, Kareem Karma Samachara, Sakto Hya Charan Karma, Parma Banoti Pursha. Karma Ne Vahi Samshiddi, Mastita Janka Dea, Loka Sangreha Me Bapi, Sampa Shankar Thumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world by devotion to selfless. One attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om Sahana Vavatu Sahana Bonattu Sahaviren Karbabaai, Tjasvi Navadhitamastu Ma Vidvisabhai. May we be protected together, maybe we nourish together, maybe work together with great vigor. May our study be enlightening. May no obstacle arise between us. Samneva Akutti Samna Hirdjaniwa, Samnamastu Vomano Yethava Susahasti. United your resolve, united your hearts. May your spirits be at one, that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om Shanti, Shanti, Shanti. Peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. We really appreciate that. And in the spirit of invocation, before we move forward, I want everyone to know that Mr. Joyner is going to be out for a little while. His wife had a heart attack this past week. And he has been in close attack as far as they will let him with regards to the hospital. She, she's at Hillendale at this point. It's been since Wednesday. They finally got her stabilized. And she'll move to the main memory campus either tomorrow or Wednesday the next day. So if you would, you all please keep Ples Joyner in your prayers. He's our general, so, and his family. So we need him like we need pockets. And thank you, Rajan Zed, for such a great piece. And, but I wanted to tell everybody from there what was, you know, happening to Mr. Joyner.
Thank you, Mayor Miladi. Thank you.
No, you're very welcome, sir. Very welcome. Thank you for having, having us. I'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, council. The approval of the council agenda had a request for a couple of other items that we inadvertently missed. So under new business E, we will have the presentation, presentation of the 2019 external audit findings. Mr. Sims, is, or, 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 Mrs. Reed, is that something that you all have?
There must have been a mix-up. That's scheduled for September 24th, I believe.
Okay.
Mayor Larry?
Yes.
That was a request from Councilmember Turner. I'm not sure if he just needed to make sure that we knew about it coming up, or I'm not really sure. So I would defer to Councilmember George Turner.
Councilman Turner?
That was an original request, but in the last request, we did defer that. We dropped it. We only sent you two items.
So?
Oh, that can be deferred.
Was, I'm sorry, Councilmember George Turner, was that also regarding the directive to draft job advertisements?
Yes, all of that was in the first request I sent to you. And I got no reply on that. And I sent a second request, and I dropped it to just two items. And those two items are on the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Then our agenda is complete. I'll take a motion for approval of the council agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I want to ask a question. We have presentations under new business that I think we're not taking any action on. So Pinola Show's Restoration Project, I think they're just doing a presentation, if I understand it from our Director of Parks. If they're not, if we're not taking any action, could we move them up to presentations?
Oh. Mr. Brandon, are you online here?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, there's a presentation. We're not asking, asking for any actions at this time.
Okay, and that's for phase one and phase two?
Yes, sir. This presentation.
Okay. Then, yes, ma'am, we can move it to, we can move that to presentations under B. Will be for the Pinola Show's Restoration Project. Okay. Do we see anything else, council? Okay, good deal. Then from there, I'll take a motion for approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the August 24, 2020, city council meeting agenda with said change.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
Four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Mayor? Aye. All right. We'll move to the approval of the minutes. First is the approval of public hearing minutes. July 13th, 2020. We'll take these individually.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Perhaps we should have added another item, but we didn't. And that is to get an understanding as to how much time we need to review the minutes of the package. The package came to us quite late, and we didn't get a chance to go over much of this. And I'll admit that I didn't get a chance to go over all of the minutes that were sent because we got this on Sunday evening for some of this stuff. I'm not ready. I'm not sure about the rest of the council to act on these minutes.
Well, um.
179 pages and 948. That's a lot for the city clerk, and it's way too much for council. This council, this five council person.
So let me take the moment to explain. One is that I got, I get, and I can only go by my emails, requests from council to add items to the agenda on Friday. Right before we get ready to send everything out, I get requests from you all that have no firsts or seconds or thirds until, until Friday. So that's not, that's not, that's not giving us enough time. Second is that on this particular agenda item, we were double worked and double booked because of the absence of Mr. Joyner. So normally, we would, as you know, we would have this out. But in the absence of, of Ples and making sure we had the budget amendment correct, that's why this went out. And along with you all's request, that's why this went out later than normal. So we have no problem getting these, the workshop materials out earlier. But with the circumstances this week, along with you all's request, that's why it came pretty late. So if, if no one has had the opportunity to peruse the minutes, then I would suggest that we move the minutes for A, B, C, and D to the next council meeting.
With all due respect to you and your position and Megan and your position,
this is not the first time that we've gotten late. Friday is too late for anybody. And I do, do send my heartfelt prayers to Mr. Joyner and, and his wife. We've got to come as a council to a drop-dead, for the most part, and notwithstanding emergencies, where we have an appropriate number of days, not hours, to read and be thoroughly clear on what we are going to meet on, on Mondays. And Thursday or Friday is too late. So we need to come together. Don't know when, might not be the proper time to say it right now. But this has to be on record where we get this fixed as a council. So this doesn't come up, and we don't have to defer because of lateness.
So if you'll allow me to say the same, Councilwoman, we request the same from council. We can't get three, four, five requests on Friday for what you all want, and then expect us to have that ready because we have to have our research. We have to do our due diligence in the same way. So we're requesting administratively that, that you all do the same. And if we need to decide on the day and stay with that day, I'm okay with that. Whether it's Wednesday for us and Wednesday for you all, or Tuesday for us and Tuesday for you all, I'm, I'm good, you know, either way. But we can't go back and do the research that we need for the things that you all asked for on, on, you know, on that timeline either. So we want to have that discussion today and make a determination for that. I'm with Councilman George Turner. I'm more than happy to add that to the agenda for making the decision for, for dates. What's the pleasure, council?
You said make a decision for a date to do it, but we can't do it today because again, it's short. But I suggest that we set a date to have a meeting to discuss, setting those parameters for having the agenda ready. Even with council add-in items, if you don't make it by a deadline, you, it just doesn't get added. And the same thing with it being posted. When shall it be posted for the public to see it? We need to set those deadlines. So if we want to set a date to have that meeting, I'm okay with that.
Yes, and a date that includes time for review from council before it's set in stone. Yes.
Understand completely. So how about if we do that next city council meeting?
City council or? What about work?
Or work session?
I think a work session might be better. Respect the citizen.
Okay, I agree. So for our next work session, Madam Clerk, you can already be prepared to put down that we'll make a decision with council as to across the board, what we're going to do with our agenda, the packet, and the council request to add items.
A proclamation or a motion?
Um, we don't have to do that. I'll just, just put it on the schedule. Now, if we were on it for a city council meeting today, it'd be, you know, before motion, but we've already passed that point. Is that okay with everybody?
That's, that's fine with me. I have, I do have a question related to minutes, though, that's not about the timeframe of when we're going to discuss it. But I am okay with that being on the next work session. We were in the past getting, or receiving some minute summaries for each, each council meeting. And when I went and pulled the, the statute on open meetings, it actually lists the requirement to have minute summaries available and posted within two business days. It looks like we've gotten away from doing that. Is, is there a way that we can go back to? I guess not, is there a way, but I guess we, we really need to start getting back to that since it's in the statute. And summaries will really help us and anyone else who's looking for what happened in the meeting. I mean, they're very short and simple. It kind of outlines exactly what should be in the summary. But I see that we've gotten away from doing that for quite a while now.
And you to the city clerk?
Yes, I can do that. I can do action minutes within 28 hours of meetings and have them posted.
Okay.
Because it'll just say that what members attended, what motions were made. It doesn't go too far into detail at all. So like, for example.
Yeah, the statue kind of outlines exactly what the summary should be. So if you just follow the statute, we'll be right on time.
Yeah, it's pretty, I used to do them all the time and just kind of got away from it, but I can get back to it. It's not a problem.
Can I make just one other point, too, to the city clerk? Is it possible for that work session, we can talk about timelines to responding to requests?
Sure.
Councilman George Turner, you were correct, and I need to do something. And that is, I'll do these one at a time. I'll take the first motion to move the approval of the public hearing minutes July 13th, 2020 to next council meeting.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move for the approval of the public hearing minutes for July 13th be deferred to the next meeting.
Properly moved in second. District one? District two? District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Mayor? Aye. Number B?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to, we defer the approval of the city council meeting minutes from July 13th, 2020, until the next regular city council meeting.
Properly moved. And second, district one?
Aye.
District two?
I'm sorry.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Mayor? Aye. Let me see.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we defer the approval of the city council meeting minutes from July 27th, 2020, until the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Right. Properly moved. Go have a second.
Second.
All right. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Mayor? Aye. D?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we defer the approval of the August 10, 2020, city council meeting minutes until the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
All right, properly moved.
Second.
In second, district one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Mayor? Aye. Thank you, council. We'll move into presentations. The City of Stonecrest Household Hazard Event, Saturday, August 29th, at New City Hall Complex, from 10:00 AM, PM.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Council. This is just a reminder to the citizens of Stonecrest that we have our household hazard event this upcoming Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. This is an opportunity to really focus on our sustainability as a city. Some items, if you're asking any questions that you are allowed to provide or present, is pesticides, poison such as rodent, rat repellent, lawn care products, automotive products, fluorescent bulbs, prescription pharmaceuticals, art supplies, and paint. There are no tires. Please do not dispose of any tires, any ammunition, any agricultural waste, or any commercial waste. But this is just another opportunity for us. We're looking forward to the huge turnout. We're getting a good number of cars. At this time, we have over 200 cars that have registered. And so we're very excited about it. I'm very excited about it. I'm hoping that the city's very excited about it as we're preparing to move on to the next step, which is sustainability. So if you like the event, please, we'll have surveys available for you at this event in which you can ask more questions on if you want to do more of these events twice a year, if you want to do different types of events. And that'll give us more ideas and more support for you as a resource. Thank you.
All right, council, any questions for Mr. Riley? Okay, all right.
Mr. Riley, don't forget to mention the census group will be there, and that's, that's, that's very.
Yes, sir.
And you, you also register in automobiles, I mean, participant. How about, you're just drive-bys?
Yes, no, yeah. So you'll definitely need to register to our Eventbrite, City of Stonecrest Eventbrite Household Hazard Event. Please, much there. Make sure that you take full advantage of the census. We will be having a table set up as we're, Councilman George Turner and his representatives will be providing a census pass out in addition to the survey. So, so you're saying two, two for one in a sense. So you're having our household hazard event. Also, we're going to, this give us the opportunity to discuss the importance of census, which I know that George Turner, Mr. Bill, Mayor Council have talked about so that we can continue to bring, provide, have more resources for our community.
Maybe I missed the clarity, but you mentioned that you have a certain number registered. What I inquired about is drive-bys. I mean, just because you didn't register, you're not welcome?
No, that's not the case.
Okay.
Have a certain number registered. However, we do have a limit that I, that I want to make sure that we have and which I'll provide some kind of ticket system for those cars who do drive-bys. But we do want to make sure that we are collecting information from our communities such as Zip.
Did we lose him?
I think we lost him in mid, middle of sentence.
If he could see that picture.
But we will accept drive-by. Can you, can you hear me, sir?
I, I got you. You will accept drive-bys. That was the main thing. Okay.
Good deal. All right, Mr. Brandon, Mr. Riley, I apologize.
That's okay.
Pinola Show's Restoration, that belongs to you.
Yes, thank you. So we have some guests that are here today. Representatives from the South River Alliance, Dr. Jacqueline Echoes, who was the president of the South River Alliance, and her representatives from the Bonneville Foundation also. Just to kind of give a clarity of what we're doing. So the Pinola Shows, we're looking to do a Pinola Show Riverbank stabilization, restoration project. Dr. Jacqueline Echoes and her alliance group have received a $237,437 grant from the Bonneville Foundation in addition to Georgia Power to complete Phase One, the Pinola Show's Restoration Project. This project probably will consist of the reducing the sedimentation load of the South Riverbank by stabilizing the stream bank and reducing their erosion along the Pinola Show's bank. In addition to this, that this grant will also help support the beautification along with this project. And so that's just the first phase. The second phase that Dr. Jacqueline Echoes is working on is a, a grant from the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program, which will allow her to focus on, mostly on constructing a kayak launch with along the Pinola Show's bank, in addition to a takeout dock at the Everett Park Bank, which will create and also creating a safe and public access to the South River. So what, who I have here is I have Dr. Jacqueline Echoes and her representation to speak on this project because what we're looking to do beyond this point, we will need to have some kind of assistance from the city in which is part of the grant that will showcase that we will have to match, a 25% match if she's awarded this particular grant for this project to, to continue. So Dr. Jacqueline Echoes, I will allow you to speak on this behalf.
Okay, I, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Larry and City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to make a presentation to you. I have a few PowerPoint slides, so you'll bear with me through this. So yeah, let's see if that's will work. Okay, you all see that? I need to share.
Mr. Bill, are you, are you with?
You should be able to, there should be a little green button down at the bottom of your screen that says share screen.
Yeah, I, I, go ahead.
And it is enabled.
Okay, I. There we go. Can everybody see that?
Good.
I can see it.
Okay, we're all good. Okay. Good. Thank you. That was a big deal. Okay. Okay, so I want to write a few more details to what Mr. Riley provided. So I'm just going to go through the slides, and then at the end, you can answer, you can ask any questions. So this, as he said, this is Pinola Show's Park and Everett Park Restoration Project. It does involve both of those parks along the South River. And just as a minute of background, we've been, South River Water Shield Alliance has been really vigilantly working on the South River in terms of improving water quality and stabilizing the banks of the river for, for a decade now. And I'm really excited that we're, we're finally making some substantive progress towards that. So first, the project scope, this project that involves, as I said, both Pinola Shows and Everett Park. Oh, and let me just mention that with me on the call is Sam McIntosh. He's with Corporate Environmental Risk Management, and they're doing the engineering on the, the Phase One of the, of the, of the project and Phase Two as well. So the project scope, as I said, involves two projects, two separate but related projects. And we just call them Phase One and Phase Two. Phase One is the Pinola Show's Riverbank Stabilization and Restoration Project. And Phase Two is the South River Water Trail Gateway Project. So when we hear we talk about Phase One and Phase Two, that's what it's about. The purpose of Phase One is to reduce sedimentation, the sedimentation load to the South River by stabilizing the stream bank and reducing erosion at Pinola Show's. The overall scope to stabilize and restore approximately 250 linear feet of stream bank from right at Snapping Road Bridge to the pedestrian path that most folk used to take down to the river. It's a very steep incline, you know, until you get down to the, to the sandbar. This particular project, we wrote, South River Water Shield Alliance, I wrote a grant to the Bonneville Foundation and Georgia Power, and it was funded. So that's how the initial capital for Phase and Georgia Power, and it was funded. So that's how the initial capital for Phase One, uh, was received. We did receive two hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars for that project. Uh, now, it's not enough, but I'll get to that in a minute. So what we're looking to, uh, address then to, uh, Pinola Shows, this is what it looks like at the Phase One project site. Uh, and, uh, as you, with every rain, uh, water comes up, chews away at the bank. And this has been going on for a long time, and it's really threatening, uh, the, the path, parking lot, you know, uh, just the Pinola Show's Park, uh, area. So that's what we're looking to, uh, to address in Phase One. That's about two hundred and fifty linear feet. Phase Two of the project is four hundred linear feet beyond the initial Phase One of the stream bank. Uh, and part of that, so that we can provide safe and legal access to the river, is to construct a stairway and an ADA accessible, uh, ramp, uh, to the, to the river. The, as I said, the, the, the kayak and canoe launch will, um, provide, will provide, um, safe access, and we're also proposing the same thing at Everett Park. Um, uh, just a note about the whole idea of the South River Water Trail. It's an idea that I've been working on for decades as well, and it's designed, uh, to provide, um, community access to the river is designed to improve water quality in the river because the, the one single aspect of what we can do for the river that makes the most difference in terms of improving water quality, uh, as it relates to requirements by Georgia EPD, is recreation. That is the one factor that Georgia EPD looks at over anything else uh, when it comes to, uh, water quality is, uh, how much uh, recreational use does the, the river, uh, or the water body, uh, receive? Uh, so when you look at the South River Water Trail, you will look at the put-in, uh, being, uh, at Pinola Shows and the takeout being at Everett Park, which is about six and a half miles of, uh, of river. Um, other planned act, uh, amenities, uh, are educational signage, the kiosks, picnics, uh, some seating area, and, uh, that's at both Pinola and Everett, and some parking lot improvements at Everett Park only. So that's kind of the scope of the Phase One and Phase Two projects. Um, this is what, uh, we will be doing at Phase Two in terms of stabilizing the bank, uh, planting, uh, native vegetation, uh, just a lot of stabilizing activity that will help the erosion and, um, and provide, uh, stairway access that would, that's ADA accessible. Okay. We have a rendering that was done by, um, by W.K. Dixon in terms of what, uh, Pinola Shows, our vision, the rendering of what Pinola Shows will look like, and that's what you have on your screen. Uh, at, at this end near Snap Finger is Phase One up to about the point of the cursor here, and from this point back towards, uh, to your, to my right, will be, um, Phase Two at, uh, at Pinola Show's. Um, as you can see, uh, we're looking at doing a lot of stabilizing here. Not as much stabilizing, a lot of planning, uh, but a, uh, a wall where individuals can, can sit. Uh, uh, but it's, it's truly designed to give a lot of stability to the, uh, to the riverbank in, in this area. And, uh, you also see here, uh, the stairway that we're planning that goes down. Uh, and the, uh, ADA ramp is not here, but being ADA accessible is a requirement of the grant. And this is the portion of the project that would be, uh, funded through the outdoor stewardship, uh, program grant. Uh, in terms of funding and where we are, um, we have, we, the, the cost of the, um, Pinola Shows, the estimated cost that we've received from the engine, from Sherem, from the engineers, I, is, um, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, we, as, as we have committed from the Bonneville Foundation, the two hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, which leaves a difference of a hundred and fifty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars for the Phase One part of the project. Uh, for Phase Two, the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program, uh, this is the grant that we are applying for, uh, that is, um, due on October sixteenth. Uh, the estimates that we've received, uh, from our engine, en- engineering partners is, um, five hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-eight dollars. The minimum you can apply for under the Georgia Outdoor Stewardship Program is five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so that's just a, a requirement of the, of the grant. Um, it's that it must be at least the project, the co- project cost must be at least five hundred thousand dollars. So we meet that requirement with, uh, with Phase Two. There is a twenty-five percent match of the, the cost, and, uh, fifteen percent of that match can be in-kind, uh, through various uh, things that we have to buy and pay for in order to apply for the grant. So if nothing, uh, if we didn't have any kind of in-kind cost, the twenty-five percent match would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, but we're looking at more than the range of a hundred thousand dollars, uh, because we will have, um, we will have, um, in-kind, uh, costs to dedicate to the, to the cost of the
Is that for vote, is that for both projects, ma'am? Is that for both projects?
The twenty-five percent match?
Yes.
No, the twenty-five percent match is solely for the Georgia Out- Outdoor Stewardship Program. Uh, uh, the Phase One, uh, we receive two, we received the two hundred and thirty-seven thousand four thirty-seven as a grant. That's what the grant was, and so that difference, w- we will have to make up in, in cash with two separate, two, two separate grants. Uh, and I will say that Phase One, we are in the process of doing now. Uh, we've gotten the conceptual design that I can share with you, uh, if, if you like. Um, we are, uh, in terms of the grant, supposed to be finished with it by December of twenty twenty-one. Uh, so, um, you know, of course, uh, it's important to, um, to identify, you know, the source of the difference and and the money that we have and the cost for Phase One. For, uh, Phase Two, they probably won't make the award until, um, late twenty twenty-one and get started in twenty-two, and then you have two years to get it done. So, you know, we have quite a bit of, of time and leeway with the, uh, Georgia Out- Outdoor Stewardship Program. Um, uh, the purpose of the program, so you, you'll know, is, is, is that it's provides support to state parks and local parks. Uh, and the program is supposed to have regional significance uh, and, uh, focus on land conservation, acquiring critical areas to protect, uh, for clean water, wildlife hunting, fishing. This is a natural resource-based outdoor recreation grant. That's what it's, that's what it's for. That's why the state, uh, allocates the money. And it's actually paid for through part of the taxes from the sale of recreational, uh, materials and, uh, uh, equipment. Um, so just kind of to wrap up, and I'll ask, ask, uh, answer any questions you have. As I said, we, uh, need cash to finish Phase One of a hundred and fifty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars as a gift estimate. Uh, we, uh, that's for Phase One. For Phase Two, uh, we need the, uh, a resolution from the City Council committing to the match funds for the outdoor stewardship grant. Uh, they have approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and we, there is a, now, either South River, South River Watershed Alliance or the City of Stonecrest can apply for the outdoor stewardship grant. We can talk about that later. It really doesn't make any difference. I'm writing the grant, so all of it will be done. Uh, but we can, you know, discuss, you know, uh, who applies. Uh, both, both South River Watershed Alliance and the City of Stonecrest are eligible. Uh, there is, is, it is a reimbursement grant, so we have to pay for the, uh, improvements and then get reimbursed by, uh, by the state. But again, if we get the grant, the money will be there. So that would be, uh, another item that we would need help with most likely, uh, because I'm not sure South River Watershed Alliance could shoulder, uh, you know, uh, d- depending on how the bills came in, could shoulder, uh, uh, the, uh, the payment and waiting to be reimbursed, so that we would need help with that. The final, uh, ask from the city, uh, would be, and I understand it's already been done, is the, uh, uh, park's master plan, because that's part of the requirement that we have to show a master plan on the part of the municipality, uh, involved, uh, as it relates to, um, uh, really priority, uh, it's that more than anything. Uh, so those are the critical, um, issues. Uh, we will need the, the resolution, uh, by hopefully October first. And as I said, the grant is due on October sixteenth, and I don't want to wait till the last minute. Uh, uh, but short of that, what, what we're looking at on the screen now, uh, is the ask. I would want to, I do want to point out that for a two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar investment, you know, the city will be getting close to nine hundred thousand dollars in return, uh, uh, as it relates to, uh, improvements to Pinola Shows and, um, the Everett, um, Park. Uh, and I, I really think that's a, a good return on, on investment. So, thank you. Any questions?
Council, floor is open.
Matthew Echoes. Um, we all know exactly where this is, and we know the reputation of the South River in terms of years gone by when it was, um, renowned for being highly polluted.
Yep.
If you could, uh, address the pollution situation as well as exactly where this is located in reference to the, uh, walking trail that we have in that area.
Uh, sure, the phase, well, both of these, Phase One and Phase Two, they, uh, dead center, you know, Pinola Shows. The re- the walking trail goes by both sites. Uh, and, um, without some stabilization, the, the walking trail will eventually end up in the river. Uh, uh, because the erosion is, is just that, uh, dramatic there. Uh, in terms of the pollution issue, uh, and, and I, I love to tell folks this as often as, uh, I can. While it is true that Pinola, that, uh, the South River was, was dreadfully polluted for a really long time by the City of Atlanta and DeKalb County. Uh, but over the last fifteen years, that has dramatically improved. Uh, the, Atlanta is under a consent decree. They have made, uh, a lot of improvements to their combined sewer system. There is nothing we can do to get rid of Atlanta's combined sewer system. They had a chance to do that twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago. They made some improvements, but they didn't get rid of all of their, uh, they did not get rid of all of their combined sewers, so there is still one combined sewer outfall on the, on the South River. But it is having to meet much, uh, to the, the, the standards, uh, that it has to meet have, have become a lot more strenuous. So it is better. The river is, when it, when it rains, you get runoff uh, from, uh, if it rains enough, you get the combined sewer, but, you know, you get urban runoff. But when it rains and with the stormwater that the South River, um, uh, takes in, you don't want to be on the river anyway. It carries a lot of stormwater, and it's dangerous when it rains. Uh, but short of that, as I tell folks, water is resilient. Nature is resilient. The water cleans itself. We do water testing at Pinola Shows. Well, before COVID, we would do it once a month. I'm looking at doing it more often. And we have never identified an issue, uh, with water quality at, uh, Pinola Shows.
Dr. Echoes, uh, let, let me just point out what I was trying to get you to say, and that is that this is located at the corner one fifty-five and in the Pinola, where there's a parking spot that leads to the Arabia Mountains Trails, and it is one of the most popular spots in, uh, the City of Stonecrest. And people are constantly going into the river, and it has raised a lot of concern, but they insist on going down that bank and recreating in that spot. So we have an opportunity to beautify that spot and make it, uh, a recreational draw for the community that is safe, attractive, and, uh, has long-term benefits for the city. And if we do nothing, that whole parking lot, like you said, is going to wind up in the river, and the whole thing is going to, uh, actually be a hazard to us if nothing is done, uh, soon. So, um, that's what I wanted to get across is that
Oh, yeah, oh, okay. But, yeah, I mean, and, and
This is an attraction for our city.
Yeah, I, and, and it's, I mean, water trails are supported across this state. Uh, you know, there are at least, uh, eighteen to twenty on various rivers across, um, across the state. So this is something that the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, uh, supports. Um, uh, you know, there's, uh, water trail, the, the Chattahoochee, it's, uh, has a water trail. So, so as you said, and, and as I said before, the only way you're going to improve, keep improving the South has a water trail. So, so as you said, and as I said before, the only way you want to improve, keep improving the South River. Because people are wanting to use it. People want to use their waterways. It's, it's to, it's to improve it, encourage recreation. And we're doing our part to, to, to test water quality and ensure that municipalities do what they're supposed to do to help water quality. So you're absolutely right, Councilwoman Turner. I mean, it's the only way to make things better.
You also mentioned the Chattahoochee River Trail. What else might this compare to that's a recreational river front draw?
Actually, the Yellow River, that's just right up the road from the Cap in Newton County, has the Yellow River Water Trail. The river, the Acony, you know. Like I said, there are about 20 different rivers in, in the state already that has water trails. And every year, they apply for these grants through the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, you know, to encourage recreational activity and economic development. Because, you know, my goal is to have an outfitter that, you know, actually brings in canoes and kayaks. And you also have to remember that it's smack dab in the middle of the Arabia Mountain National Heritage Area, and, you know, and that brings in thousands and thousands of people who would take advantage of it if, if there were an outfitter and easy access to the river. So there are a lot of good opportunities here.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
Element, Dr. Echols, in reference, and I think you also mentioned kayaking and canoeing. Is that resources that would be available? And if so, will they be charged to the patrons, utilize those services?
Well, no, if you own your own kayak or canoe.
Will we be renting anything, any, any type of equipment, looking at that?
Well, well, most folks who have their kayak or canoe have, you know, the paddles and, and the the life jackets to go with it. But we do, we do offer, South River Watershed Alliance offers each year canoe and kayak paddles during the summer months. We've done two this year. You know, with COVID, it's been, we got a late start, and then it's been raining every day. So we have it, we've done two, and, and, and I've turned people away. I mean, they, they really do enjoy kayaking and canoeing on, on the South River. So, and also one other thing, and, and, you know, I know you all have other business, is that Rockdale County recently received a Georgia DNR recreational trails program grant. So they, I'm sure, will begin work on their water trail by early next year. So, you know, just right down the river, the Rockdale County is working on the same, and I've been working with them for five, six years to get this far. But they now have a grant from Georgia DNR, and that's what they'll be working on.
No, Dr. Echols, just to kind of jump, piggyback on what you're talking about. This, this opportunity not only gives us a great opportunity to service the Pinola Shows Bank, but also the Everett Park Bank. She said that we'd have completed our master plan. We're looking to present this within the next couple of council meeting sessions. But just to give you an early indication, this is a part of our master plan. Just give you a little insight of what we're doing. Also, with that Everett Park Bank, this is a great start to a wonderful jewel that's over there at Everett Park in that district to which we can start laying out some good quality services and good quality programming. And so having a takeout bank along that, that dock would be really great for, for that community. And we just don't have kayaking and canoeing on our side of town, which gives that resource. So this is really a great opportunity for our, for our citizens.
Okay, Dr. Echols, we really appreciate it. Council, any, any more questions? See you, ma'am. Thank you, Dr.
I'm sorry, Mr. Brandon, you said that district. Did you mean to say District 5?
Your district, your district, Councilwoman Brown. I truly apologize. No, yes, ma'am. Your district, which will definitely be in great communication with you too. That's prepared.
And if any of you want a copy of this print, this PowerPoint, we'd happen to get it to Brandon, and you can use it forever.
And everybody knows I will touch base with you and have that meeting with everybody to make sure that everybody gets access to that information.
Yeah, you can send it to, I, I'd definitely be on record asking for it, yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You can send it to Mr. Riley, and he'll, he'll send it to all of us.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Well, thank you very much. To appointment of personnel for the information to council and the folks that are on, on the, on our team meeting here and on the council meeting. I want to tell you all the great folks that we've added to what we're doing here in Stonecrest. And let me tell you that is, so upfront is, is in our budget from from Jacob, so there's no extra charge for all the folks that we've added here. So I want to call their names, and then we'll just move forward from there. Camille Taylor will be code enforcement officer. Tasha White, code enforcement officer. And I'm, and I omitted to, to thank this young lady earlier for her assistance along with Mr. Travis Sims on the report that we were working on, as Geo Schrocks, who is the accountant. And as we saw from today, from Travis Sims, I've, I don't know how I went this long without officially welcoming him to the team. And Ms. Janet Jackson is going to be consulting with us with a mayor and council so that we can continue to move forward on our quest to make us a, a better city. Those are the folks that, that we have that, that's been added for today. Madam Clerk.
You didn't mention what Ms. Jackson's role would be with us?
She's going to be a consultant. I thought I said that. If I didn't, I, I, I didn't make myself clear.
I'm sorry. Can you, when you say consultant, can you give us a scope of work? There's a lot of things a consultant could be doing.
I can, I, I can, ma'am. I can even send that to you in writing, but we could do that a little later. That, that would be fine.
I'm sorry. We just, I just would like to know how, what, what it is, Ms. Jackson, what we doing for us?
I would appreciate that, but we're gonna, I'll cover that with you later, if you don't mind, ma'am.
I do mind, sir. We'd like to know what Ms. Jackson's going to be doing. You mentioned everybody else's role, but you didn't mention her. So if you would, please, just mention what her role is.
Ms. Campbell, I see a consultant.
I understand that. That's, I mean, there's, we can consult on a lot of different things.
So we.
I told it in doing what, sir?
Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Let us, to public comments, please.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. That is insanely in, in, in disrespectful.
It, it is not disrespectful.
It is extremely disrespectful. I've asked a question that is a reasonable question, and we deserve an answer to what. No, sir. No, sir. You, you did not. You did not. Not to the satisfaction of those who are misunderstood of what the role is.
Okay, I'll tell you what. Ms. Jackson, give, give them whatever information that you'd like to, to have with regards to what you'll be doing with us.
Good evening, everyone. I will ask Mr. Wright to chime in as well, if necessary. There are a few things that I was asked to do. One, in relationship to assisting the staff with developing some policies and procedures for various aspects of their day-to-day work. Two, assisting with reviewing your meetings, your history, various other documents to determine if there are ways to create better flow with your commission meetings. I noticed council meetings, and that's one of the things that you all just discussed was even setting some parameters about when requests for agenda items can come in, when minutes need to be completed, when materials need to get to the council members in a timely fashion for meetings to get, to help you get prepared. I was asked to look at that process. Also asked to talk to each one of you as members of the elected body as well as some of your higher-level staff people, just to get a feel for the environment and how we can lay ourselves out to move forward for the next three years. You've got three years under your belt. And what can we do to, to move forward in the next three years so that the organization is indeed prepared to address the challenges in front of you, capitalize on your strengths, identify your weaknesses, and figure out where we can go to do better.
And, and I must also chime in that nothing about personal towards the individual, it's a matter of the process. And we went through this about two other appointments for which we still have not gotten the information requested on how that we go about arriving at selecting these personnel for the position.
So I'll chime in with you, Councilman. I'll chime in, if you don't mind. The same way we came about two enforcement officers, the same way we came about an accountant. We based on what we have with the need. And it's clearly that this is a huge part of the need between mayor and council. And those, those positions that, that does not require the confirmation of council, I can have those done. This does not require a confirmation of council. We clearly need someone that can help us in this area. And as we were last in executive session, not sharing any details, but you all were very happy with Ms. Jackson's background. And from that, now we have an opportunity to have a person that can help guide us, help consult with us, and help us move to the next level so that when we're continuing to look for either a interim or permanent city manager, we have a person that can, can help identify it and do the other things that she, you know, just talked about.
I think all of this delays our effort to get a permanent city manager, and that's why I would personally like to see our efforts put. But now, I understand, we don't have to concur with this nomination or selection. But there's a process that persons must go through to be appointed. And we just want to be able to review the process and say that, yes, it followed the person's policy, personnel procurement path that we should be following as a city. And, and, and that's why when we get surprised with this at the last minute, it puts us in a position to almost embarrass someone, and that's the last thing I want to do. But still, we want to make sure that things are done according to some guidelines.
Mr. Mayor, if, if I may, I, I'd like to ask now, with this appointment, and I think we might be missing words, and I just want to make certain that we're not. There were a couple of other names mentioned, including Ms. Taylor, Ms. White, Ms. Schutz, Ms., Mr. Sims. When you, are these appointments, I, I'm assuming these are all appointments? And that was number one. And then number two is, from what I understood, stood, is that you said there was no additional cost. These are all going through Jacobs, and there's no additional cost for any of these employees coming on board. And they all serve, to the most part, either the city or council. And I'm trying to understand where the heartburn is with that. And whether or not there is a policy that would say apply to Ms. Jackson and not apply to Mr. Taylor or to Ms. White.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'll answer that question, then I'll, I'll recognize you and Mr. Wright. Thank you for the clarity. Councilman Clinton, none of these were appointments. None of these were appointments. And what this was, was the, in our agreement with Jacobs, when we feel as though we have the need for these particular positions, and like you, Councilman Clinton, I noticed that no one else mentioned the other four, but that's okay. But they were not appointments. They were personnel announcements. And I announced the personnel, and then now we're in a questioning mode. So, Councilwoman Turner, then Mr. Wright.
The other personnel were code enforcement personnel. And that is already consistent with what is going on, and we know we had someone to move out of code enforcement, had to be replaced. That is standard. No question that. Mr. Sims has been on board for a few weeks. And there was some concern about the way that happened, but he's been in place, and we've had a chance to deal with that. This is the only one that is just fresh to me.
So you missed Geo Schrocks. You missed, you missed Geo Schrocks.
And that was mentioned at the last meeting as well, or at least the meetings I took before, that she would be coming on board. So that's, that's not new. This is the one that is a new position, and it needs to be vetted in terms of, did we follow what we needed to follow? Then if it's nothing that we have anything to say about, then so be it. But when I get it right here now in the council meeting for the first time, I'm just concerned.
So let me correct you on something, and we'll go to Mr. Wright. It does not need to be vetted. Mr. Wright?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If I could add some clarity, I guess I would, I would say that what we're proposing for Ms. Jackson is not formal city position, but literally a consultant, worked for a short period of time. We've observed there's a number of, of issues in, in places where someone with her expertise could advise us and help us particularly in improving communication with the elected officials and, and other processes that go throughout, throughout the city and help us operate. She's going to take a look at it and help see ways we can operate better. And, and again, significantly improve communication is the goal. It's, I, I think, not to put words in the mayor's mouth, but I think he wanted to let you know that we were bringing her on board for the next several months as, as part of announcing other new staff. I, I recall, I was, I think it was last meeting, that there was some concern about staff movements and, and changes and faces and folks not knowing who was where. And I'm sorry if this is confusing, because she's not taking an existing role. She's literally serving as a consultant to help us all do a better job.
I have, I have a question in regards to that, in reference to, we met Ms. Jackson on last meeting. And my understanding was that she was coming to us as a city manager interim or something, looking at that. It was never really clarified to me whether she was going to be a consultant, or she was going to be a candidate for city manager. So what kind of direction are we looking at for Ms. Jackson in reference to her being applied with the city?
So.
Go ahead, Dr.
Mr. Mayor, you, I was just going to say, I, I've been talking to Ms. Jackson for a number of months about consulting with the city. And so, and the, the conversation about her serving as a city manager is, is a, a rather more recent development. And I think the mayor should address that one.
Yes, and to Councilman Rob Turner, quite frankly, Councilman Turner, you even hit that on the head last meeting. Executive session, so I can't repeat what was in executive session. But Mr. Wright is correct. I took his consultant piece, and quite frankly, I was looking forward to nominating Ms. Jackson as interim or full city manager. However, with the way it is beginning to, to, to play out, I still knew that she had extreme value. You know, just looking at her background and just looking at, you know, some of the things that I, I thought we needed help on, even as we sit today. I thought that it was a really good idea, unbiased, untapped source to, to come in clean, look at what we're doing to be able to, to improve our processes. That's, that's how this came about, Councilman Rob Turner.
Mr. Mayor. There has to, there has to be a level of respect and before that takes place here.
You think?
I don't think I know. And I am, once again, sitting here as only eight months in, and I am embarrassed yet again. There's just certain expectations that I, that I have of you being quote-unquote "the father of the city," the head of. quote unquote, the father of the city, the head of Stonecrest. We as elected officials should never sit here and find out anything on this Zoom call. Because you can doesn't mean you should. There's just a little bit of respect that we ask for. I'm going to talk about Tammy, that District Five Council. And Mayor, I don't believe I got that.
Believe what, ma'am? I'm sorry, you don't believe what?
I don't believe I got that today.
Okay.
Um, record to reflect, and we can have our conversation later because, again, I'm already embarrassed. I just wanted to say that and be done with it.
So let me, let me, let me respond. Let me tell you some things I'm embarrassed about. I'm embarrassed when I sent out a note at the last council meeting that I want all council persons to participate in the mayor's update.
Let's don't do that, Mayor.
Nope. You can, you can let me finish now.
No, I can, but let's, I I. I.
We're talking about being embarrassed.
Not to do that.
Talking about being embarrassed. Let let uh, I gave you yours. Now please, please be respectful of me. I've done everything I know to do to communicate with you all. Is putting putting in Iris Settle as the uh, Chief Liaison Officer. As to being able to have a consultant here that is is not familiar with any of us, so she can take what we do claim. As to being able to have the all this branch, reach out to everybody to say, please participate in these things. And I don't get that from you all. So you 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 being embarrassed? No, I'm 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 embarrassed. And uh, I'm not saying how you feel or how you don't feel. But what I've tried to show council is I'm willing to put in the time, energy and effort from myself, from people that are around me, from folks that can help us. And I all I get is pushback. So now here it is, a person that's a seasoned professional who has managed cities ten ti- four times our size and counties ten times our size. That she's seen every scenario that can happen here. And 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 just the mere fact that Mayor and Council is having this conversation shows you that we need this person. And since we're not paying extra for her, and this is part of what we're doing here, how about, how about let's give this a chance? How about let's give this a chance?
Yeah. Again, I'm going to record as saying that it is a duty of the mayor to appoint a city manager. And we do not have one. That's a specific duties that we uh, are relying on the city manager for. And so specific duties that are quite quite important, coming up real soon, that we rely on the city manager to provide for this city. And all of the uh, things that are happening seem to be a means of tap dancing around getting the city manager. We brought in other personnel to fill in voids where the city manager, in my opinion, should be doing. And uh, I I think we are serving ourselves and the city short by not making a bona fide effort to bring on a city manager.
I'll respond to you, Councilman Joyce Turner. You used the word tap dance. Uh, which I take offense to, but that's okay. Um, here's, here's what I won't tap dance around. None of us, including myself, have the experience to even know how to pick a person. That's what Ms. Jackson can help us with. You don't have an idea, nor nor that the rest of them. As a matter of fact, to be quite honest with all of you, I have more municipal experience with cities and counties. Not at the state level, but cities and counties, counties. And working with city managers and mayors than all of you all combined. But you all won't take my word for it, but that's okay. I'm okay with that. That, once again, this is why I'm excited about the opportunity with Ms. Jackson because she has no, she has no dog in this fight. She has no dog in this fight. She can come in clean and look at everything that we're doing. As far as tap dancing around trying to have a a city manager, that's not the case. Because I've seen what traditional thirty year city managers look like, uh, here, uh, at Stonecrest. So, um, uh, it's not my failure to feel the city manager's position. Uh, we all have to take some opportunity, and I'll have to take some reasoning with this. Is that uh, you all confirm the person that I would appoint. But uh, I've offered even in the past, look, if that's not the case, if you don't, you if you don't agree with my my appointment, how about we go out and 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 you all can now have your search? Oh, you can have your search. I've said, I've I've said this. Bring your search back. And as and as long as the person that I want it to be considered is 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 in that pile, that was okay. You all turn that, you all turn that offer down. So I have been trying diligently to work with you all. And as a matter of fact, whether people like it or not, you can ask Ms. Jackson or Wayne Wright or anybody else in absence of the city manager. Uh, the mayor is a city manager, and I've been doing everything a city manager does. I sign all the checks. I cut all the deals. I sign all the contracts. That's 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 what city manager does. The difference between what we haven't been able to accept is that our style of management here at City Hall. And we work in a team environment here at City Hall. There's no one person that does everything. We work very, very well a- as a team. And 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 I'll say this in closing, and then we can move to the next subject, or we can keep talking.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments when you're done.
I had, I mean, I wanted to respond to that, and I will apologize for the tap dancing comment in this environment that was probably out of order. But what I'm saying is that we put piecemeal, um, personnel in place because we needed the help. And 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 in lieu of having a city manager in place. And uh, if we have a city manager, I would be calling, I think the city would be calling on the city manager to do all those other functions. Um, in terms of asking you to do a search, as long as the person you want is a part of it, is not exactly what you said. You wanted to put the person you wanted in an acting role. But if you can recommend anybody, and we could recommend anybody if that came down to us. But there would be no interim.
Somebody, somebody needs to mute their mic. Somebody needs to mute their mic. I'm I'm I apologize, Councilman Turner. Uh, 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 please continue.
Now, I'm just saying, I I see a stand. We need to act on getting the city manager and make that our a number one goal.
Well, um, you are correct about that, and then I'll move to Councilwoman Cobble and then back to Councilwoman Grimes. Is that, yes, you are correct. I said, while uh, the concession that I made, uh, and that is a concession, if you ought to be actively participants in looking for a city manager, then the the uh, person that I would want, while we were looking for the city manager, would be acting a interim city manager. You are one hundred percent correct about that. And that's, that's part of negotiating, um, uh, what both parties want. But as you, as you mentioned, that's not what, that's not what you all wanted. Councilwoman Cobble.
So since we can't divulge the executive session conversation, I would like to at least jog some memories that the conversation did not stop at can we agree to in the person that you would want for the acting city manager while we look for a city manager? You more so told us what we could do with our search, which was put it in a certain place that was not on your desk. So there was a little bit more to that conversation. It wasn't a simple. It, yeah, it wasn't a simple, let's just, let's just negotiate. It was, you can do your search, and there's a certain place I'm going to put that search because that's not who I want. And that's why, right, so that's a, that's a different conversation. Yeah, you said you would put it somewhere, but not in a place for consideration. And a much more disrespectful place that you told us you would put it.
In the river. I know what I said.
Right, so 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 let's make sure we un- that the public understands what you're saying. What you asked us is to appoint who you want as acting city manager while we did our search. And when we finished our search, as you just put it, you would throw that search in the lake. So that's, that that is not, I'm negotiating so we can all get what we want. That's, I get what I want, and then when you all finish what you wanted, I'll throw that in the lake.
So that's what you're making this out.
That's, no, that's, that's exactly what you just said. You said, so that, that so, but that's not the comment I actually wanted to make. What I wanted to make was about Ms. Jackson. And not, not about her, but about why this was strange to us, because I think Councilman Clinton maybe tried to redirect why we were, why we had some confusion about, um, this consulting uh, position. And it's because, again, we can't divulge executive session, but we came out of executive session um, with a deferral for a very specific reason. And then to turn around and come back with this same person now playing a role that you almost at first would not even allow us to understand. And then kind of still bring Mr. Wright in to say, oh, it's a consultant to do exactly what you all asked, exactly what you all described that she would do when we were in the work, in in the executive session. So what you've done is taken the role of the appointment out. But she's actually still doing what you all presented to us that she would be doing as a city manager or in an interim city manager. So there, there's no need to pretend like why we're confused. And it has nothing to do with her credentials. It has everything to do with, when we left the conversation the first time and came out with a deferral, it was for a very specific reason. And then you come back and bring her back with the same role, just without the approval of council. So what happens is you circumvented the process to still get what you wanted, which sounds similar to the point I was just making about acting city manager versus chucking in the lake. It it, you can't pretend like you're doing us a favor and then turn around and go, but since you don't like my favor, kick rocks. I mean, that, that's exactly what just happened here. So you bring Mr. Wright in to kind of smooth the rock over a little bit. Mr. Clinton tries to smooth the rock over a little bit, but with the case is the case. She was presented for one thing with the exact same role. And you bring her here today with the role absent of a title, but the same responsibilities. And then act like we're crazy and we don't communicate well. You bring in Ms. Ms. Settle, who was a wonderful person, by the way. But you you hire her to be a liaison, so someone in between you and council, because you don't want to talk to us anymore. You hire a a chief, like you contract with a chief legislative person so that she can then communicate between us, you, and some of the boards. So what you're doing is putting people in between us because you no longer like to communicate with us. That is not a governing body. That is you on an island, putting the rest of us on a ship and having us sail the other way. And at some point, we just have to get to a point where we're going to just call it what it is and cut it out. Or we're going to struggle moving the city forward because we continue to have these issues. And Jacobs for for just being blunt and 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 saying how I feel, Jacobs allows you to do that over and over and over and over and over and over. And we see it. We are not blind. We see it. We know it. We feel it. And it really is disrespectful. Just the fact that you didn't want to even explain what the lady was going to be doing tells me that you knew it was the exact same thing. You just didn't want to say it. And then we wonder why we have some issues. Th- this is it. This doesn't make anybody feel like a team? This is insane.
So are you done, Councilwoman? Can I speak?
I am.
Thank you. A couple, a couple of three things, and then I'll go to you, uh, uh, Ms. Grimes, uh, Councilwoman Grimes. One is that what you do, Councilwoman Cobble, uh, you twist and you speak around the subject, you throw things up and down, and you you make these innuendos, and you just don't even take a breath when you're talking. So that people will actually understand that uh, most of what you said was incorrect. So let me correct you on some of the things that you said.
That's your opinion.
Thank you.
I'm not incorrect.
Like you're doing now, like you're doing now.
That's not an innuendo. That's a direct answer.
Yeah, see, this is what I'm saying, folks. If you think other um, potential city managers aren't looking at this nonsense right now, and you all think it's just me, you're sorely mistaken.
They sure are.
You're sorely mistaken. Because at this point, uh, I'll go back to what I originally said, is that um, uh, uh, I have a, I I I I have an appointment in mind. And then if you all want to do a search, and if that person is not uh, in that search or that's part of the uh, 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 where I can make them interim city manager or acting city manager. Um, you are correct. I'm pushing all those people back in the lake. Um, because we're not going to uh, have a uh, uh, a, 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 a person working here in Stonecrest, working their fingers to the bone every day, all day, getting us to where they are. Getting us to help, get us to where we are. And that person can't compete for an opportunity? You're 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 mistaken. You're mistaken. Uh, second is that, and this is probably the main issue. And where where most of you all are upset at is that you don't know how to communicate with executives. You say, you you know, uh, I I put people in between us. I put Ms. uh, Settle in place with us, who is already our chief of staff, who's already a doctoral candidate, that's as smart as they come. Because I I said in the city council meeting, maybe there's something that I'm missing that I'm doing. I'm I want to look myself in the mirror firsthand and said, may, I'm I'm not being able to communicate with regards to what is happening here, so I need some help. So I put her in place of this, and you all have completely ignored her, other than Councilman Clinton. Third thing, Ms. Brenda, uh, Cornelius. Ms. Brenda Cornelius went in here to talk to you all. Uh, uh, it's particularly exclusively, her part was and is external. Particularly because we need help with our legislators and the relationship that we have with the state legislators here in Stonecrest, along with communicating with council. But the way you put it, Ms. Cobble, is that I turned around and stuck her in the middle of us also. That is not the case. I'm, I, and I'll re- restate what I said the whole, the the this whole period. Is that I am doing everything I know to do within my power to be able to help, you know, move the ship forward, to be able to communicate with with uh, you all the best I can. But all I get, you know, uh, for most of you is anger. Uh, 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 nobody told me, uh, I'm embarrassed. Look, you know, there's a certain way we, we uh, uh, I've been, been trying as best we can to me, uh, to communicate. And um, uh, one of the people, and I'll go to you next, uh, uh, Councilwoman Grimes. Um, and I say this all the time. Uh, you all don't know this, but we have this conversation. Um, I want to be more like Rob Turner. And the way I said, and the reason I say I want to be more like Rob Turner is that Rob Turner can calmly uh, disseminate the things that is that is happening. He and I can have a conversation. Uh, he'll be the the first to be honest with you and tell you. And you know, I call him when I'm in a communication dilemma. I call him first. I speak to uh, Councilman Rob Turner more than anybody. I want to be better at this. I want to be where we're going, all right? But uh, I I need, I need some people that can help me. And every time I bring some people on to help me, here we are, you know, going down the same rabbit hole again. I think Ms. Jackson is, you know, after, after, after looking at her credentials, um, after, you know, further talking with her, my uh, first impression of her was to to uh, bring her as a uh, a, a city manager or a city manager candidate. Well, once we got into executive session, and by the way, whoever you, whoever's telling Dave Marcus our business in executive session, you need to stop. Because that man puts right out on, on, uh, we're not even ten minutes out of, uh, on a day out of our, our, our meeting, and Dave Marcus is already ha- having on Stonecrest News and Views. Nobody, nobody outside of executive session knew that Ms. 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 Jackson was going to be uh, looked at, you know, possibly as a consultant, and there's Mr. Marcus putting it out there because you all are disclosing it. And that, and and that's, that's, that's not right either. So as we try to sit and find some people that continue to lead us, look at the big picture, counsel. We're not behind on our money. We're not doing anything that's bad. We're not doing anything that uh, that's hurting our citizens. We're paving roads. We're getting stuff done. We're, 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 we're buying buildings and handling our business. We're doing everything that we collectively can as a city. And 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 without a dime of tax. Not one dime of tax being paid. So it is not like that we're, we're absolutely, there's some major storm that's coming along that's going to, you know, that's going to kill us all. That's not the place. So I'm going to say again, I'm trying to put some people in place uh, that can help us. And help us communicate, help us do the work, and all this animosity and talking crazy and fast. Guys, I I I'm just, I'm just, I I I'm just, I'm just not for that. Um, Councilwoman Grimes, and then we're going to, we're going to move forward.
Ooh. Mayor, I'm going to say this. I wish I had a level of trust where I did not have to verify. I'm going to say it again. I wish I had a level of trust where I didn't have to verify. I'm going to leave it at that until such time you decide you want to have conversation with mayor and council as if we are a part of the team. That's it.
Okay. Um, Madam clerk, public comments.
I have a timer. I'm going to set each one for three minutes and then I'll read them. Okay, the first one is from Elise Thomas. My name is Elise Thomas, and I'm a resident of the English Oak subdivision located in the county of DeKalb. And I've just been aware that there is a recycling plant being built at fifty-one fifty-two Snap Finger Woods Road by Metro Green Recycling. The recycling plant is in an area near several subdivisions, places of worship, apartment complexes and schools. The building of Metro Green Recycling Plant will affect the whole community with problems ranging from health issues to loan appropriate values. At this time, I'm asking for you all to get involved, investigate and deny Metro Green. At this time, I'm asking for you all to get involved, investigate and deny Metro Green Recycling Plant expansion into our Stonecrest community. Okay. The next one is Kamla Gonzalez. Good day, members of city council. I'm writing this letter to express my dissatisfaction in your response and lack of urgency in issuing a stop work order on the Metro Green project. Metro Green is building a fence, but that is not enough. Our house shake. We can no longer sleep past seven AM, six out of seven days a week because of the construction that is going on. Your home is supposed to be where you find peace, but we have no peace. We elected you to represent us and I'm sad to you all. I'm sad to, you all have fallen short. I'm asking you to be courageous and do what's morally right. We need to stop work order now. It doesn't matter if the weather forecast predicts rain or sunshine. We are in imminent danger for the council member that feel as if they can no longer represent us. Please hand in your resignation and let someone who's not afraid to fight for justice have your spot. Okay, the next one is from concerned citizens in South, South DeKalb. Tonight, the citizens of South DeKalb are standing in opposition to the continued building of the toxic business built, being built in the backyards of a residential community. We are demanding that Jason Larry and the Stonecrest City Council do what is necessary to stop Metro Green from building on Miller Road and Snap Finger Woods Road. We know that the mayor and council members can put a stop work order on that site tonight. We need you all to stop straddling the fence and do it. We cannot take another excuse. We don't care about pending litigation. We want you to stop what you all have allowed to begin. Black lives must matter more than corporate dollars. Stonecrest should put the health of their citizens first. No one wants Stonecrest coffers to prosper on the backs of black residents. If this concrete recycling plant is allowed to build only feet away from hundreds of homes and apartments. You will be allowing toxic fumes to be released into our air. Silica is a known carcinogen. You will also be allowing a peaceful community to be subjected to the noise of concrete being crushed six days a week, 12 hours per day. Would any of you want to live next door to that? Would any of you want your retired parents to breathe in those fumes daily? Would you want your children and grandchildren to have developmental issues because of contaminated air and water from this plant? Do you think the mayors of Dunwoody or Alpharetta would allow their constituents to suffer like this? Black lives matter. We need all of you to fight for the predominantly black community that will be affected by this toxic site. Stop Metro Green Recycling now. Okay, the next one is from Zay. I'm a resident of Miller Wood subdivision. I don't want this recycling plant near my home or anywhere in our community. The recycling plant is a health hazard in our community and should be put to a stop immediately. I demand the mayor and council members put a stop work order immediately to stop further construction of this plant. Lastly, I wanted to know what was the conclusion of the investigation into how Metro Green received its permit? And where the permits obtained illegally. The next one is from, hmm. It's H.C. Gary. Um, so I'll go ahead and start. I've been a resident of South Cab most of my adult life. I've participated in county and community meetings in support of and in opposition to various initiatives. This is the first time I felt that our county and our municipal officials have blatantly betrayed the trust of residents. Putting a toxic recycling plant in a residential area and down the street from a public school is not in the public good. It is an environmental and public health danger which cannot and will not be undone. It must be stopped. This will endanger the health of residents and destroy our quality of life. This would not happen in another part of the county. It wouldn't even be considered. What about our property values? I've read articles which have tried to spin this travesty as an oversight or other governmental jargon. But it's actually the selling out of an entire community for the financial benefit of some who do business with the city and county. Who approved this? Who failed to take action to halt it? What personal financial was gained? What is the city and county doing to represent the citizens in the area? We will be there and hold each of you accountable. The next one is from Piper Green. To the Stonecrest officials, once again, the community is waiting for you all to stop the work going on right now in Metro Green site on Miller Road and Snap Finger Woods Drive. We understand that a hearing will take place on August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty. But you all could have prevented them from working on that site two weeks ago. The public needs to see where each of you stands. Will you be on the side of justice and vote for a stop work order? Or will you allow the destruction of a residential community to continue? We urge you tonight to vote on a stop work order. We will not rest until the toxic business is shut down. Again, we ask you, would any of you want to inhale toxins every time you step out of your door? That is what will happen to thousands of South Cab residents if you continue to allow Metro Green to build literally in our backyards. Would any of you want to see your property values plummet drastically because of a toxic dump site is across the street from your home? Would any of you want your future children and grandchildren to suffer developmentally because toxins were released in the atmosphere and water? This will be on your heads if Metro Green is allowed to build that site on our backs. We need you to put the people first and not toxic corporations. What side are you on? Take a side tonight and stand on it. Stop Metro Green Recycling now. Next one is from Adam Clesetts. We do not want this industrial recycling plant in our backyards. It will cause noise and air pollution and devalue the many nearby homes. This is far too close to residential areas. City council, vote for a stop work order for the Metro Green Recycling Plant. The next one is from Tracy Hickman. I would like to ask the mayor and council to issue a stop work order on Metro Green if not already. Please lock the gates. It is within your powers as a council to do so and it is in the best interest of the citizens of Stonecrest and the neighboring cities to stop the work being done daily at the Metro Green site off Snap Finger Woods Drive. The permit to work was issued although they were not compliant with DeKalb County. I do not care who is to blame. EPD, Stonecrest Council, Mayor Larry, DeKalb County zoning, et cetera. We want to fix the blame and correct the issue and get them out of our neighborhood. Therefore, we are asking that not only you place to stop work order quickly. We are asking that the stop work order remain in place and will not be lifted until the DeKalb County Court has issued a ruling. We are watching this meeting tonight and outside doing a car rally. We will continue to fight to stop this plant from coming into our city. We hope you understand, we only want what is right for us and we hope you all feel the same. Okay, the next one is from, I think I've read this one already, Ms. Gonzalez. Yes, I already read this one. Um, the next one is from Jeremy Scott. Mayor and council, it's great to see a new grocery store development coming to our city in District Two at Covington Highway in Panola. This area of Stonecrest is home to several TV studios, including the CW and Acuity Brands, the number one lighting company in North America and among the top in the world. However, what good is a new grocer and $250,000 townhomes if the properties on the other three corners of Covington Highway and Panola Road look like something only seen in undesirable neighborhoods? The cab commissioners love to talk about what Stonecrest isn't doing. Well, let's show them something and get this intersection, which frankly looks hood, cleaned up and returned to or surpassing its former glory. After all, this is the gateway into Stonecrest on Covington Highway, coming from unincorporated DeKalb. And one of the ways outsiders will be traveling into Stonecrest to visit our new Home Depot distribution site or to plan their own projects in Stonecrest Business Park. Let's clean, clean up all of Stonecrest, starting with our gateways. And the last one is from Turquoise Mosley. I have been a resident of LaFonia for thirty-two years and a homeowner for six of those years. The mayor is the face of the city and is concerning how he interact with the council members. More time is spent undermining the council instead of working along with them to get the job done. It's sad watching the meeting and you can tell it's issues. And if I was someone looking to bring business to Stonecrest, I would have second thoughts now. At every meeting, it is an issue with something when most of them show it's from not having organization within the executive staff and hold everyone accountable. I.e. there was a comment made about the minutes not being available because someone was out for surgery is not an excuse. If you have problems in-house, it should never show outside and right now it's showing. I appreciate council members Turner, Cobble and Grimes for the actions they are bringing to the front to make the mayor follow rules he created. I want positive results and right now the negative is outweighing that because of the dysfunction in the executive staff. Mayor is, was very unprofessional to make the comments. Someone had to be an ass because people have an issue with waste green making it into their backyard. The goal of each executive member should be leaving a lasting mark for years to come. Let's do better as a whole because I'm embarrassed right now to say I'm a resident of Stonecrest. And that's all the public comments that I have.
Alrighty then. Uh. We will move to our public hearings. Uh, for the Stonecrest Master Plan. Let's see, who do I have on deck here? Mr. Hotower, would that be you? Or you, Mr. Your team?
Oh, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is, uh, Marcus Arnold.
Oh, yes, Mr. Arnold. How you doing? I apologize.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. I'm here as well, Michael Hotower.
All right. Good seeing you, gentlemen.
You too.
Um, question, gentlemen. Uh, this ca- this came up and, uh, tell me where, um, uh, tell me where this belongs. Uh, along with, of course, uh, council. Um, we had, uh, some corrections that we had to make to the map. Um, and also, uh, revision in, in a, a, a table, uh, four dot one. Uh, do we handle that in the, um, uh, public hearing, uh, Mr. Delmarco? We, um, just make those statements with regards to the amendment?
During the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Alrighty. Okay, gentlemen, um, let's see here. Um, I am, uh, take a motion to open the public hearing for Stonecrest Transportation Master Plan.
May I make a motion to open a public hearing for the transportation, Stonecrest Transportation Master Plan?
Alright, properly moved and second. Uh, one.
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Mayor? Aye. The, um, public hearing for the Stonecrest Transportation Master.
Um, excuse me, Mayor Larry?
Yes.
Um, who made the second on that motion?
Uh, Jimmy Clinton, Councilman Clinton.
Thank you.
Alright. Mr. Hotower and team, you now have the floor.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is a, of course, obviously a public hearing and at this time we would certainly welcome and take any comments from the public on this, on this matter. It appears that, uh, later on, on the agenda is the appropriate time for action to be taken on this, on, on this particular item. Uh, Marcus Arnold is here on behalf of BHB, the prime contractor. And he and I both are here to, uh, hear, hear any additional comments from the public regarding, I guess, prior to the mayor and council consideration of adoption of this, of this, uh, policy document. Marcus, you, a- a- anything to that?
No, we're just willing to, uh, address any, any comments, uh, related to the, the draft master plan.
Okay, um, Madam Clerk, are there, are there, are there any comments?
There are no comments for, um, or in opposition of the Transportation Master Plan.
Alright, I have, uh, um, with permission of, uh, 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 council and, uh, Mr. Hotower. We have the requested, uh, correction of the maps pages twenty-seven, forty-one, forty-eight and fifty-six. Um, and the maps on these pages show an existing path trail along Rogers Lake Road, Marbert Road and South Stone Mountain LaFonia Road, but no such trail exists. New maps have been provided. The maps on these pages show a proposed path trail along Rogers Lake Road and Madder Road. Uh, but the trail along the route, um, uh, would serve no relevant purpose, but the correct maps have been, uh, inserted. Also, um, with the, uh, revision of table four dot one, the livable cities initiative, LCI program. Um, aside from programming, uh, federal and state transportation dollars, the ARC also administers regional transportation funding for the creation of suburbia studies through his livable city initiative, LCI program. Local governments and nonprofit organizations are eligible to submit grant applications for the planning and implementation of enhancements to existing centers and corridors. Uh, since two thousand, ARC's LCI program have been utilized by municipalities uh, to implement improvements such as the installation of pedestrian and bicycle facility safety enhancements and street scaping. Uh, the two thousand thirteen Stonecrest LCI plan, uh, should be used by the city in partnership with the five oh one C, six nonprofit, the Stonecrest, uh, Business Alliance Incorporated uh, as the basis for applying for the enhancements to the LCI study area. And, um, uh, Ms. Hotower and Mr. Arnold, uh, that language has been inserted into the, uh, with your approval, of course, with the, uh, uh, the study as we have today. Um, so, do I, did I, did I have everything correct?
Uh, yes, that's correct. Uh, Mayor Larry.
Uh, council, is there anything to, uh, Mr. Hotower or Mr. Arnold? Okay.
We were, we were standing back for the, uh, for the, on the agenda for consideration during all this is for consideration by the mayor and council.
Good deal.
Couple of, uh, minor items. Uh, one is that I wanted to go through this plan again with your PowerPoint presentation as a guide. And we never got that asked on two occasions. Maybe it was sent and I just didn't get it. Did you?
I believe, I believe the, that doc, that document was, um, sent out to council, uh, Councilman Turner. Um, but, but that, that presentation as well is posted on the, uh, project's website, on the city's website as well and available. Um, but, um, you should have, you should have received, see the, the PowerPoint.
Okay, well, maybe it's my fault, but I didn't. Um, also, uh, with what the mayor just read into the records, uh, that's going to take a little time to process that now. So, okay. I'll take a look for it.
Okay. Uh, any further comments, council? Alright, then I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close.
Alright. Our second, uh, district one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Okay, Mayor, aye. Public hearing is now closed. Right, we'll move to RZ twenty dash zero zero one, six zero eight six and six one zero zero Hillendale Drive. Re- rezone for the subject properties of, uh, MR one to MR two and future land use character to urban neighborhood for the development of a hundred and twenty units of workforce housing. Mr.?
Uh, yes, sir. So, um, this case, uh, was previously heard at the July thirteenth, uh, planning commission. Uh, it was tabled until today for the August twenty-fourth, uh, uh, not, I'm sorry, planning commission, but city council meeting. Uh, this was tabled to until the August twenty-fourth city council meeting, uh, again, for the applicant to provide more, uh, information to city council and also to allow applicants again, uh, applicants but residents to, uh, to submit their comments, uh, if they have one regarding the application. Uh, to remind everybody again, uh, staff, do recommend approval for, uh, the applicant, uh, for the applicant, um, uh, with listed conditions. Uh, and we do have several comments, uh, regarding, uh, that is this in, uh, in opposition and for the applicant, applicant. Uh, that's pretty much all staff has to give you for his presentation.
Great, um, I'll take a motion to open public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before you open public hearing, uh, was this advertised for a public hearing since we tabled this last time?
Yes, it was advertised for a public hearing, yes.
Okay.
It was sent, uh, to the oncoming ground, uh, August, uh, fourth.
But, um, in our last action with this, it was tabled to be heard at this meeting, um, decision. And I'm concerned that now it goes back to a public hearing. How does that fit with what action was taken at the last time it would be for us?
We, we've already had a public hearing already. Again, so we've already. We, we've already had a public hearing already, again, so we've already satisfied that comment. There's nothing that says that we can't have more public hearings. You can still make a decision. We're just, uh, still giving opportunities, uh, for residents to voice their opinion on it.
Okay.
It was a pleasure, council. We advertised for a public hearing, so, uh, Mr. Wheeler, we have to have it, correct?
Uh, yes, sir. Again, again, you've already satisfied of having a public hearings all the way back in May, I believe. Again, there's nothing that says that you can't have more public hearings to get more comments from the public. Again, you still have to make a decision on the yea or nay, but again, we're, again, since we, since we, we advertised having a public hearing last time, and we have people who submit comments, those comments weren't read. Um, I have, I have, I had two that I sent to Ms. Reed, uh, for it to be read this time. So again, I'm just trying to allow the, the public to have their voice to be heard, uh, regarding this application.
Let me, let me be clear, if, if you don't mind. Uh, you're saying that this was advertised for a public hearing for the first time around, but we have not advertised for a public hearing since we said we were gonna hold this for a decision?
No, sir, no. We've advertised the public hearing this time around. So we've already advertised for the twenty-fourth this to have a public hearing. No, sir. We've advertised it the past two times for a public hearing. The last time, the comments weren't read. So this time, we advertise for a public hearing again for these comments to be read, and those who want to submit additional comments can be read, uh, under the record.
Which means that if something new was introduced, then it would not have been addressed, would've been addressed the first time we had public comments.
There's no, there's nothing new that had been addressed. Again, it's the same information that's been provided. Again, we're just asking for people to submit comments as well.
So this is, uh, kinda like a continuation of the first one?
Pretty much so, yes, sir.
I'm a little confused, but okay.
I'm gonna move that RZ two zero 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 one, sixty eighty-six, and sixty-one eighty, uh, eighty Hillendale Drive, open for public hearing.
Second.
Properly moving in second. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Mayor? Aye. Well, now, open for public hearings. Um, Mr. Wheeler, then Madam Clerk?
Uh, I've, I've sent my comments to Megan, uh, to be read.
Alright.
Um, Mr. Wheeler, you're, um, talking about the ones that you sent me this evening from the public?
Yeah, those are the only two I, I received, so I sent them to you to, to be read, just to make sure if you, if, uh, if you got any other ones, you can read those as well. These are the only two that I received.
I have two comments that are in opposition, and then I think I have about eight that are in support of the zoning. So I'll start with the opposition first. Um, and I don't think I'll need a timer on it, but I'll go ahead and time it. In case somebody sends in a, um, email. That should be good. Okay, this is from Andrea Chait. We do not need any more low-quality housing in Stonecrest or Southeast DeKalb. We definitely don't need it if it needs government funding to build and establish itself. We need quality, single-family homes and businesses that improve quality of life. Do not vote to establish this project in our area. Then the other one is from Dave Marcus. Mayor Larry and councilpeople, the rezoning is a wolf in sheep's clothing. The applicant calls this workforce housing, but it is simply low-income housing that will, oh, that will be open to anyone who can afford it, whether they work in Stonecrest or somewhere else, and whether they work at all. If the council approves this rezoning, there is nothing that requires the developer to do diddly as far as who lives there. The developer has not mentioned which businesses or types of business have the workforce he claims he will house. And that doesn't matter because once it's approved, the city will have no control of that and no report. The developer has not mentioned how he will screen people to make sure that work in Stonecrest, and that doesn't matter because once it's approved, the city will have no control of that either, and no recourse for that either. The description of workforce housing is a ruse. It is the bait in what easily could be a bait and switch. I hope that Stonecrest isn't so hungry for development that it will try to snatch the cheese in this mousetrap. And that leaves eight minutes and thirty-two seconds for the opposition. And then I'm gonna switch over to the support. I'm excited to hear about the Hillendale project since there is a new senior development around the corner and an additional senior development being constructed further up the block. I will assume this will not be housing for the elderly. Since Emory is right around the corner, I hope this new project will not house low-income individuals. Welcome to the neighborhood, Evelyn Riley Moore. Teresa Hardy, greetings to Mayor Jason Larry, city council and staff. I'm writing this email in support of the workforce housing development on Hillendale. Currently, there is no affordable homes available for people who go work at essential jobs. The affordable homes definition is currently thirty percent of gross income. If an adult is a minimum wage earner by state and federal standards, they would basically be homeless. There are no homes or hotels available in metro to accommodate minimum wage earners. It is my belief that every citizen has the right to have access to affordable living, and we as a community should support removing homelessness in DeKalb. Based on what has been presented to me, this development provides a sense of opportunity for the wage earners. It also is an area for potential growth to fulfill the mission of Stonecrest. Live, work, play, worship, shop, et cetera. And for this, I am sending my support of this new development. If you would like to discuss further, please contact me. Serving the people, Teresa Hardy, NAACP DeKalb branch president. Good evening. This is from Martha Jackson, Realtor of Solid Source Realty. Good evening. Thanks for taking the time to allow this to be shared with all of you. To change from MR one to MR two may seem out of order to some, but as we look around at other communities that are on the move, we see that MR two structures are prime, thriving, and on the rise in competitive communities. Now, does that mean that we want substandard construction in our community? A resounding no. And I believe that the proposed model would be one of quality, and we, the community, shall and will demand quality built and upkeep. Most of all, we, the community, want to offer every individual a decent place to live and raise their families. Not every family can afford a home or desire homeownership. Thus, the demand for rentals is high, and changing from MR one to MR two would allow us to help more families and strengthen our community. We have to accept families where they are now. Again, with this construction and the change from MR one to MR two would allow us to continue to strengthen families and communities. Thank you. This is from Maxine Williams. Greetings to Mayor Larry, Larry, council members, Rob Turner, my councilman, and citizens of our city, Stonecrest. I am Maxine D. Williams, and I'm a thirty-one-year resident of the Somerset condominium community. Let me simply say the growth and changes I have witnessed in the county. Two thousand one, the mall at Stonecrest, two thousand five, DeKalb Medical at Hillendale, which is now Emory at Hillendale, two thousand six, Lou Walker Center, current member of this awesome facility. Others include La Tonya Industrial, I twenty interchange, the Brightstone Senior Community, and most importantly, the creation of the City of Stonecrest in two thousand seventeen. Surely, the best is yet to come. I am in support of the Blue Ridge Atlantic Development in the creation of workforce housing to continue with the economic development that is so vital for our families and our communities. With sincere thanks and best regards, Ms. Williams. My name is Alfira Edie, and I'm a resident residing in Stonecrest. I'm sending this email to show my support for the workforce housing development project in Stonecrest. I believe this type of housing will provide young working people with children a nice, affordable, and safe place to raise their families. Thank you. My name is Jackie Alexander, and I'm in favor of workforce housing units being built on Hillendale. That area needs help with continued new development for seniors and young people just starting out. Councilman George Turner, I voted for you, and I want you to support this development with your yes votes. My name is Bill Bruckner, and I'm the chairman of the Stonecrest Housing Authority and a Stonecrest citizen. Our federal and state governments know that fair and equitable housing improves the quality of life in communities and invigorates their economies. That is why they set up funding mechanisms for developers to build such housing and establish housing authorities to ensure that appropriate developments receive that funding. As this city's housing authority, we won't consider so-called welfare housing. To live in the development, we consider you must have a job, you must have good credit, and you must be at a certain income level. We review the developer's reputation and their previous developments. We want to know what type of security will be provided, what kind of parking, what kind of lighting, the quality of the building materials, and the amenities that will be provided. Based on the, these criteria, the Stonecrest Housing Authority unanimously approved the inducement resolution for Blue Ridge Atlantic. It lets them know that if they can overcome the normal hurdles of building this or any kind of development such as building permits, rezoning, et cetera, that they will likely get funding they seek. My daughter is an assistant manager at a grocery store in Durham, North Carolina, a city that is six times the size of Stonecrest. Despite the pandemic, she must show up every day for work and confront people who refuse to wear masks. She works hard, she works long hours, she pays taxes, but she doesn't make a lot of money. This is the type of housing she needs. These are the types of rent she can afford and indeed pays today. This allows her to have a little money left over to spend on entertainment, restaurants, clothes, shopping, and all the things a community needs to thrive economically. She's a good person who deserves this type of housing, as do health technicians, nursing assistants, orderlies, dental assistants, law clerks, teaching assistants, court reporters, security guards, office clerks, and all the many other people like her who would be eligible for these apartments. That's based on May two thousand nineteen Georgia State Occupational Employment and Wage Estimates. Please don't judge people by their income or by a few bad apples. I know plenty of people who can afford five hundred thousand dollar homes that I wouldn't wanna live next to. I encourage you to approve the rezoning for this development. And the last one is from Melissa Kemp. Dear Ms. Reed, as a new member of the DeKalb County Branch of the NAACP, I would like to express my support for the workforce project for the reserve at Hillendale in Stonecrest. I live at Stone Mountain and used to live off one twenty-four. Such a project is necessary for this neighborhood because it will provide affordable rents for working adults, jobs for area residents, and tax revenue for the area through population growth. The misconception that such housing will bring an undesirable element to the neighborhood should be ignored because it is false. Affordable housing is an extreme need for Metro Atlanta's working families who are being priced out of many metro area cities, and the Stonecrest area is no different. After the economic struggles of two thousand and two thousand eight, the area and points southwest could no longer support its real estate. But residents still need housing. They work and pay taxes and deserve to have housing that they can afford. I hope you will push this project forward. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Melissa Kemp. And that's all that I have with two minutes and thirty-one seconds left.
Okay. Um, we've heard the pros and cons and ups and downs uh, with regards to this development. Uh, um, I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
Mayor, um, the applicant was not given an opportunity to speak.
Uh, I apologize, uh, um, I'm sorry, Battle. Um, yes.
Good evening, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, one West Court Square, Decatur, Georgia, three zero zero three zero, representing the applicant. Um, I am extremely distressed, um, over this application. Um, we have spent the last few months, um, trying to disseminate information to the city council with regards to the proposed project. We have tried to respond to every question that we have been asked. Um, we've tried to provide additional information with regards to, um, the type of development. We've provided information with regards to what would be able to be developed under the MR one district regulations and what the cost of those types of improvements would be and what that would do to the rent structure um, on the property, which would price it well beyond to a luxury apartment, um, uh, 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 price point, um, that would not be affordable for, um, workforce housing individuals. We've been asked who would in fact live in here. I think that those who have replied, um, in support of this application have beautifully described those individuals um, that would qualify for this community. Um, this is not the same type of community, for example, that LDG down the street is doing. Uh, this is for individuals who are at sixty percent of AMI and, um, and, and up. Um, these are people, you wanna know who they are? They're probably your secretary. They're probably, uh, the folks who work at the city. Um, they are people who work at the hospital around the corner. They're people who work along Pinola Road, um, at the QT and at the, uh, Kentucky Fried Chicken. Um, they are people who look, work at the library down the street. These are individuals who are in your families. These are cousins. These are your brothers, some of your sisters, some of your aunts, some of your uncles, maybe your mother. Um, these are individuals who have a right to have quality housing. They want workforce housing to allow them a place to live in dignity, um, just as each one of us goes home every evening. Um, we believe that this is an appropriate location. This is an area that is highly, um, developed with apartment complexes already. Um, this is an area that already dictates for high-density residential development within the I twenty overlay corridor as you move towards Pinola Road. Uh, yet this city council, um, even during this interim period where we've tried to reach out and to provide additional information, um, we have not been able to really have much direct conversation. And, and when we've offered, uh, to provide information, we've been told that you have everything that you need. I'm not really sure what that means. We did have a follow-up, um, community meeting last week. Uh, we did have, um, individuals in attendance, um, including the owners of the apartment complex, um, that Presswick recently built. They had representatives there as well as, uh, representatives from the adjacent properties. Um, we had no one there in opposition. We've, um, just, you know, continued to try and plow forward, um, with this. But quite honestly, um, my client, um, and I think out of great respect for the owner of this property, is not willing to move forward um, if this appears as if it's going to be denied. Um, if it is gonna be denied, then we would like to withdraw this application. Um, the owner of this property, um, has owned this for a considerable period of time. Um, they have a right to be able to develop their property, and if somebody else encumbered into a development, uh, that would be more suitable from you all's perspective under the, uh, Office Professional, um, designation, um, which is the current land use and zoning, then they should be given that opportunity. I can say that, uh, under the OPR, uh, under the Office Professional, uh, land designation, this property could be rezoned to O and I, um, and, uh, developed for multifamily under that designation. If this is an issue of not wanting to change the land use. Options for us, if this city council really wants to support workforce housing within this community. If not here, I'm not really sure where. Um, the county and the city have greatly restricted the areas where you can even have multifamily development. It is only allowed in certain, um, land use categories. The mass majority of the City of Stonecrest does not allow for multifamily development. So, I'm, I'm perplexed, I'm saddened, um, that we are sitting here faced with, I'm having to withdraw this application because of a lack of support, um, that we seem to be getting with regards to providing this type of quality housing. Um, and, and so a, at this point, I guess, I guess I'm asking to withdraw this application, but it is with an extremely heavy heart, um, but I'm doing so because I know that there's so many people that are in need right now. And this COVID environment has really shown how much we need this type of housing and how people are really suffering. And I would hate, um, to allow these hundred and twenty-two units not to be developed simply because we can't seem to find common ground on a density issue, which makes no sense to me because there's already density allowed in this uh, particular area at much higher than what we are asking for. So, um, I guess I, I will wait for any rebuttal, I guess, I have, if I have that opportunity, or if you all have any questions for us. But I guess, basically, I've been tasked with asking to withdraw this app. Um, but certainly, if there was any way to get it approved this evening, I certainly would like to move forward. Or if there's a desire to actually have some conversation with the city council members, which we have volunteered to do, um, to respond to any remaining questions. We've been told that it's not just density, it's other stuff, but we're not being told what the other stuff is. So if we could have clarity, maybe we could provide further information, but if not, um, then we will respectfully withdraw this application and let you all move on. Thank you.
Alright. Um, council? Floor's open. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, is the place to talk about this now, or do we have to close public hearing?
Talk about this now or do we have to close public hearing first?
Well, I was gonna leave the floor open, but I'll close up, I'll, I'll close the public hearing.
I was just asking.
No, I think you're right, Councilman Clayton. I'll, I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close public hearing.
Properly moved in second. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Mr. Wheeler? Um, we'll have some, I'll open the floor for conversation with counsel. Um, then after which, uh, what is the procedure for uh withdrawing an application if we don't come to terms?
Uh, really, it's the applicant who can request withdrawal and the city council has the approval, that has to approve the withdrawal. Uh, um, has to prove the withdrawal. Uh, if they don't approve the draw, then I believe it's uh, uh, denial uh to the, for the application.
It's a, it's the same um option, so you can
Yeah.
approve, deny, or withdraw.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Hazen. The floor is open.
Mr. Mayor, if, if you don't mind, can I uh direct my question to Mr. Wheeler?
Yes.
Mr. Wheeler, um, as much as you can disclose, the properties, the adjoining properties, uh, I know there's a vacant lot to the, I think, if you're coming from Pinola Road, there's a joining lot to the left that is vacant, and then there is the lot where uh the applicant is looking to put the apartments and then next to that, I believe there are some apartments. Uh, the lot to the left of this, is, is that lot has been, is there anything going there that you know of or in development at this particular time going there? Is that another apartment? Is it a gas station or what?
Yeah, oh, yes, sir. So to your first question, that is, uh, probably look vacant to the left at this current time, we have a um it is a, is a proposed gas station at this time. Uh, we, we, it, it is, uh, this, it is in the LDB, it's in the LDP uh review process at this point in time. Don't know if it'll be approved or not. Uh, it's been, uh, we've been going back and forth to develop it for some time, so uh, that's about as much information I can give you on, on that. That's probably the only undeveloped piece of property located within the direct vicinity uh of the applicant's uh property.
And then if you, then if you go the other direction from the applicant property out, all the way back to um which is the nearest crossroad, I believe, is um, I thought the industrial park. The properties along those, are all those apartments or sort of mixed use or what, what's the lay of that land? I, I know from riding through, but I don't know the official use.
Yeah, so uh locate, no, look directly located right next to the uh, to the subject property, uh, is the Somerset condos. Uh, so those would be like townhomes uh and similar, and then further down the road, uh, you have more apartment complex. Uh, and then located uh north, uh, north of the, um, subject property, uh, is the, is the um senior Brightstone Senior Housing Project, and then there are apartments uh located uh north of that, and then further up, uh, you have uh smaller uh, um, sub, single-family subdivision homes. Uh, but within that area is the kind of a, a, a medium-density uh residential neighborhood, not your traditional uh, single-family subdivision neighborhood as you would see uh south, uh, in the south part of the city.
Okay, and then this is my final question before I make my statement. And is it true that the density is, is pretty much, the density that the applicant is asking for is pretty much the same in general as that area? Uh, compare higher or lower, about the same?
Uh, yes, sir. It's the, it's the, it's not as high as the Brightstone apartment, uh, uh, Brightstone apartment, uh, the Brightstone Apartments uh density, um, is right below that, um, and is above the um, some condominiums, uh, density and the uh, uh, apartment complex. Uh, but uh, when you have uh the idea again is you want to transition out towards your, your single-family homes, which is located north, northeast of the subject property. You want to transition that from medium-density to your lower-density uh subdivision, so uh, as the city has already designated that area as kind of a, 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 a office professional, as a s- as a, a work, well, work um center. Uh, so you want to start at the Hillendale where the Emery Hospital is and then ex- expand out uh to be more of a, a, a transitional zoning goes from your high-density apartments and then to Somerset condominiums or townhomes, and then further into your single-family subdivision uh, um, development.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. At this, at this point in time, based on the information that you just gave me and based on the conversation I have had with uh uh Attorney Battle as well as um, uh, some of the, uh, that, some of the other or- organization in and around the area. Um, there is a, there is a stigma in our community in regards to, I don't care what you want to call it, low income, no income, uh, any kind of income, but the fact of the matter is that we have all types of people in our community. And uh, you know, I don't think we are any of us, any, or in a position where we should say wholeheartedly that we wanted to start a certain part of our population because of their income or any other reason. So, you know, I think, you know, as I've said often, and I'll say it again, there's a place for almost anything in the city of Stonecrest with the key word being place. And when you look up and down that corridor, this is, I don't see this as being a problematic place for this type of development, given the landscape, given what's surrounding that particular area, and given what the, the future use can be. So, uh, you know, my, my job isn't repres- isn't to represent developers and, and to tell them where and how to proceed, but my job is to make certain that our city provides a la- the landwork or the, the landscape for all types of citizens. And so we have to kind of think about it going into the future. For instance, you know, practically, what else would that, what else would go there? What else are we looking for that will, that will situate well within that corridor? You know, that would make sense. I mean, we can have our high hopes, but what is more probable? So now we're in a position where we can control the look and feel of a development and it by, you know, by conditions or whatever or what have you to make certain that we have a Class A development in that area, no matter what group of people it would serve. So at this point in time, I would tend to uh support the development, uh, you know. But I'm just one city councilman and, and that's where I feel right now. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Uh, just to add to something Mr. uh, Councilman Clayton asked, and that is that if um Mr. Joyner was with us, he'd tell you that we met with DOT and there is a plan to improve that whole intersection where Farrington intersects with uh Hillendale, and it may well impact what's going on, on that corner. Uh, Mr. Joyner would have all of those details and would probably give that to you tonight if he was here, just to let you know that there are other things that uh have been planned for that corner. And um, in my mind, I know we've just finished the comprehensive plan. It would be good if we had had a commission to study our housing situation in the city of Stonecrest and give us some official numbers and an official um plan as to where a certain level of houses uh would be recommended. And uh, what I see is that this is a step down from what this property is um, zoned as, and I cannot support it.
Floor's still open? Okay, I'll make my comment. Um. I never thought I'd see today where black folks tell other black folks anything about workforce housing or, 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 or using the word low income. Absolutely is astonishing to me. I one hundred percent agree with Councilman Clayton, um, that for Stonecrest for everybody. There's a place for Stonecrest, in Stonecrest, for everybody. And, 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 and Mr. Wheeler, if I'm off-base with this, let me know. I, I think the, the, even the medium-income, sixty percent of the medium-income here, which is seventy and change, is you, you have to make forty-five thousand and above uh to be qualified to live there. Am, am I, am I right or wrong, Mr. Wheeler?
Uh, I'm, can I, I have to pull it for me, but I think Michelle or Miss, or Christopher, Isaac can actually give you details on that. I can't um, I have to pull that up really quick.
No worries, but I, I'm fairly, fairly sure I'm correct about that as a, as a, uh, as we move in this area. And I've said this before, and you know, I know some of you all just aren't listening to me, but um, I have five units in a half a square, a quarter square mile in that place. I know exactly what rents go for, from eight fifty to a thousand fifty to eleven hundred a month in that same area. Some of us have adult children that are at home right now. They can't find a job, they can't work enough to be able to pay that. And um, I'm just, I'm just saddened by the, the, the attitude that we have when people come and burn their hard-earned building and construction money to help us build up a place. Then we just kick them back down to the curb. I'm, I'm, I'm disappointed. I don't know why else to say it. And uh, we can talk about studies, we can talk about uh finding this, we can talk about, oh, you know, these, uh, jobs gonna be that much. But when I know I get calls from Emory Hospital, uh, right down Hillendale, asking about where you know, uh, uh, your everyday healthcare folks can live in this area, being able to not have to commute to work, uh, that's, that's, that's right around the corner versus the things that you all have already said you don't want. The other thing is, is, is gas stations. On a lot that size, that's what's getting ready to come up next. And uh, as uh, uh, Ms. Battle stated, the owners of land, they have every right to be able to move forward with um, uh, this group or, or, or another. I just thought that we were in a position, uh, well, we are in a position so that uh we could help others and make a complete Stonecrest, but clearly, uh, I have a different view of uh where we are with regards to Stonecrest, so. Um, uh. Attorney, um, what is the proper, um, what is the proper uh, way to handle the, the withdrawal?
Um, so you could vote on it, just like um, an approval or denial, you just vote to withdraw?
Okay, um, that's a, all right, that's a, that's in our old business, so that's what we're handling. Uh, do I have any more comments from counsel? Seeing none, we'll move to um, slot twenty, dash zero zero one, three eight eight one, Button Gate. Uh, operated personal care home of the, the six residents. Mr. Wheeler?
Yes, sir. Uh, um, if I could share my screen, Adrian?
Yes, you should be clear.
Okay. Okay. Uh, yes, so uh, this last case brought to you is even, it's SLWP dash twenty dash zero zero one, uh, the ADH eighty-one Button Gate Court. Uh, the applicant is Mr. Tony Martins. Uh, he is requesting a special land use permit of operation of a personal care home uh for five individuals. Uh, the subject property is zone R one hundred, residential medium lot in the district. Uh, on the future land use character, uh, for this subject property, suburban residential. Uh, the policies of, for this uh, care area, uh, care area emphasize protect stable neighborhood from incompatible developments that will could alter established single-family residential development patterns and density. Uh, to encourage residential development to conform with traditional neighborhood development principles, including improve, do, improve pedestrian vehicle activity, excuse me, uh, the surrounding uses are residential and the surrounding zoning is R one hundred. Uh, the subject property is located in the Burlington subdivision. Uh, again, this is the aerial map showing that the subject property uh is surrounded by single-family homes. Again, this is the zoning map showing that the property is the zone R one hundred residential medium lot. Again, the subject property is located in the residential um subdivision, um, uh, the single-family detached um home. Uh, this is the site plan submitted by the applicant, showing that the site plan of where the applicant will be, uh, uh, where the applicant will be used in his home uh, to take care of the, the proposed residence. Uh, this is the elevation of the subject property. Um, as required, the applicant will not be changing anything of the outside, uh, beside, to indicate that anything else uh, than a single-family home, also it should not indicate that this uh, subject property uh is a personal care home. If should, if should the city council approves the uh, did, um, the application tonight. Again, this is just uh more elevations of the subject property. I'm sorry, and that's just a typo from Chris around, I apologize. Uh, this is the standard, uh, these are the standard criteria which we'll be using to make the determination uh based off of. Uh, there's twenty-seven, I believe, criteria, uh, the use specific uh for review of a special land use permit. Uh, staff will not go through all of them, but will only highlight the ones that, uh, that they believe is important. Uh, again, staff has reviewed as it offers all criteria which is submitted to you in your packet. Uh, staff believe that the applicant has not meets uh the conditions for a criteria Q. Uh, and that states whether the proposed use satisfied the requirement contained within supplemental regulations for such a special land use permit. Uh, the proposed personal care home appears not to satisfy the requirement contained within supplemental regulations for a special land use permit, section four point two point four one dash B, number three. No personal care home located in R one hundred shall be operated within a thousand feet of another personal care home. Uh, there appears to be an existing uh personal care home located within the same subdivision approximately nine hundred eighty feet southwest of the subject property. Uh, therefore would trigger uh applicant failing to meet criteria S, uh, stating that the, the approval of the subject uh, uh, approval of this application would cause a proliferation of this, of these type of uses uh in the area. Uh, so therefore staff, uh, concludes that the applicant failed to meet all requirements and therefore staff recommend denial of the SOUP dash twenty dash zero zero one. Uh, the planning commission agreed with staff recommendation and recommended now of the SOUP dash twenty dash zero zero one, failing to meet criteria Q and S of the special land use application. Uh, any questions of staff?
Counsel, floor is open?
Um. No question, I, 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 I'll wait until we go to public hearing.
I'll take that motion, Councilman.
Mr. Mayor? For public hearing for special land use permit, uh, dash two zero, dash zero zero one, thirty-eight eighty-one Button Gate Court, to operate a personal care home up to six residents.
All right, properly moved. I have a second.
Second.
All right, thank you, sir. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye. Uh, and Mr. Martin is here with his team to present uh their application uh, and, and uh, any other supplemental regulations as well. Uh, Mr. Martin?
Mr. Martin, you have the floor. Uh, Mr. Martin, can you hear us?
Yes, can you all hear me?
Oh, we can now, yes.
Okay, well, I would like to start off by saying thank you, Mayor, Mayor Larry, and to the city council. We look forward to hearing your feedback and presenting this project.
Uh, Mr. Martin, could you uh speak up a little bit? I think we're, I think everybody's having a little bit hard hearing, sir.
Do you all hear me?
Does it sound better here?
Can you all hear me?
It's very faint.
Uh, I think you might have to get closer to the mic, sir. I think you're, you sound a little flanked to it.
Can you all hear me now?
Yes, that's better, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, uh, well, thank you to Mayor Larry and to the city council. Uh, we look forward to hearing your feedback and presenting this project to you. Um, as presented by Mr. Wheeler at previous meetings, we are petitioning for a special land use permit at uh thirty-eight eighty-one Button Gate Court for, well, to operate a personal care home. This is a very personal and passion project for us. So I would like to start off by introducing myself. My name is Tony Martin, and I've worked in this field of social work for over four years now. I am currently the lead paraprofessional at Helping Hands, um, where we offer resources and long-term support for clients with various types of mental, developmental, and/or learning disabilities. As the lead paraprofessional, also train, guide, support, and assist other paraprofessionals in their work. In my work with uh disadvantaged communities and clients living with disabilities, I noticed a lack of housing options for many of my clients. We service over two hundred male and female clients at our two locations. The resource that is most sought after is housing. Personal care homes are at capacity, the HUD waiting list is three to five years, and women and children take precedent over any male clients that would to come in. Um, I have three male clients right now that are of a HUD waiting list. One is homeless, one is living on his uh friend's couch, and the other is living with uh his aunt. All of these men deserve stable living environments. And based on this reality, we decided that personal care home is the best way to serve an underserved community. I discussed this with a few of my closest friends, my wife Christina, James, and Andrea, and this is how we think is the best way to serve this community. And I'll allow them to introduce themselves.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Young. I'm a former Marine and I have over ten years' experience in human resources, payroll, and compliance. I have volunteered with No Kid Hungry, Feed the Hungry, Habitat for Humanity, and I'm also a court-appointed special advocate for children in Cobb County and working extensively with women's, a woman's, I'm sorry, a women's veterans group in Marietta, Georgia. I look forward to using my background work for this project, which is to provide safe housing for people with disabilities. Thank you.
Alright.
And good evening. I'm James Young, like my wife Andrea who just spoke. I'm also a former Marine and found my purpose early, to help others who may not be able to fully help themselves. Professionally, I'm a longtime tech exec, however, my collateral duties have included corporate compliance officer and chair for several diversity and inclusion committees, both domestically and abroad. I'm also a veteran advocate for Mus Ministries in their homeless facility, where I work closely with ten homeless veterans, all of which are living with developmental disabilities. My advocacy for their well-being and interests are the primary focus. Being a disabled combat vet myself, I fully understand their plight, frustration, and at times, their desperation.
And hello, I'm Christina DeZulweta. I personally have volunteered also in different nonprofits. I currently sit on the volunteer board of the International Women's House in Decatur, a shelter for victims of domestic abuse and human trafficking. We met James and Andrea over five years ago when Tony was working with James. The main motivation pushing this project is our passion to serve our communities. And our sense of community also includes the reason why we want to start this project in Stonecrest. Tony and I have lived in Burlington South for over three years. We actually excitedly bought this house a couple of months after getting married. This home is ten minutes away from Tony's father's house, where he has lived for over fifteen years now, and where we lived when we first moved to Georgia. We have a number of family members and friends around the area as well. And we love how Stonecrest has grown and how it is welcoming new businesses and new residences. But it is equally important to remember who's going to be left out and who will try, who will really struggle to find a place in this community as it grows. After reviewing City of Stonecrest's comprehensive plan, we noted that in addition to its efforts to attract new businesses, it also included policies to, for example, encourage mixed housing to the benefit of integration of people from various socioeconomic backgrounds in policy H two. It also includes support for fair and equal housing for all people regardless of disability and/or other circumstances in policy H five, to provide information to residents on where they can find these resources. And perhaps more important to our project, to support organizations such as ours that construct, manage, and provide services for affordable housing as stated in policy H nine. Policies H seventeen and H eighteen further underline not only the need for supportive housing, but also City of Stonecrest's dedication to supporting housing options for special needs populations, including those with disabilities. For many of our prospective residents, special supportive housing is the only way to make progress towards the objective of living a more independent life, or what's close as possible to an independent life. People living with developmental disabilities in our community would be better supported, would have their medical needs fulfilled, would achieve better their personal development goals in a personal care home that is compliant with the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, or DPHGD, and where the operational team has experience in the field. Before James covers some additional points, I want to underline that in addition to providing needed housing, this business that we're proposing would provide additional tax revenue, and we would be creating qualified long-term employment for people within our community.
Madam Clerk, how much time do we have? Are we within the time limit?
I didn't start the timer.
Okay.
They had three minutes and fifty-one seconds counting as we go now.
Okay.
Thanks Christina for that clarity. It's been articulated to us that the recommendation for denial of our petition was grounded in our failure to meet Q and S of the special land use permit criteria. I'd like to go over that quickly. First, our location, first was that our location is within a thousand feet of another PCH. In fact, our location is well over a thousand feet from the closest PCH. The nearest state licensed facility that's within nine hundred and eighty feet is actually a community living arrangement, not a personal care home. So we're in compliance from our position. Community living arrangements and personal care homes are independently regulated and mandated, have their own relative set of compliance guidelines, as governed by the state and by the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. So much so that the rules and regulations for personal care homes literally state, and I quote, "A facility classified as a community living arrangement cannot be operated on the same premises as a personal care home." And while the definition section of City of Stonecrest zoning ordinance seems to consolidate the two entities, Georgia code and Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities offer a clear delineation of their relationship. Next condition was that the owner and operator would not be living at the proposed location. In that particular case, that's not an issue. When we look at City of Stonecrest ordinance, it literally, and I'll jump directly to the meat of that, there are, the home occupation types are type one and type two. We are considered a type two. Type one requires that you have to live on the property and you cannot see clients. Type two does not have that requirement, and it also is of the two, the one that requires that you provide a, that you do a special land use permit, which is the path that we're going on. So obviously, we are a type two home occupation. And I guess lastly, the city's current position for denial of this petition on those grounds that were out of compliance with the zoning ordinance might be misplaced in this particular case. We believe we are not out of compliance in Q and S.
To conclude, we want to request your support by approving this special, special land use for thirty-eight eighty-one Button Gate Court. It is projects like these that define whether we are open and welcoming communities for both our families. As Tony mentioned, this project is personal, and we have family members with the type of disabilities we aim to service. And that's one reason why we haven't given up after two years. And the other reason is that there is a need for this in the community. One in six children in the U.S. are diagnosed with mental, behavior, or developmental disabilities. When these children grow up, their goals are similar to ours: gain independence and live fulfilling lives. But sometimes they require additional support to reach their core objectives. This is what this project is about: support individuals that need a little extra help. We hope that you support and approve our project and welcome us into the community.
And I would be remiss if we didn't express that we attempted, in all of this, we actually found that there was an amendment to chapter twenty-seven, and we asked for a copy of it. And we had a difficult time getting a copy of it, and the copy that we got was actually a working redline copy. We never got one that seemingly to us would be considered as fully adopted.
Your time is up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wheeler, you have the floor.
Oh, I believe now for those who may speak in opposition, I got a lot of emails previously, in the previous, at the Plan Commission meeting, which I submitted into the packet, which you should be able to read through. I haven't received anything as far as for this public hearing. Megan may have received something, but I just forward on the initial comments that were not be able to, that weren't read at the Plan Commission meeting, forward into your packet so you could see those.
Madam Clerk?
I have one, two, three, four, five comments, and I'll start this timer.
Right.
This is from Sean. My name is Sean Pittman. For the past approximately twenty years, my wife Teresa and I have resided at thirty-eight thirty-five Button Gate Court, Lithonia, Georgia. I received a mail invite to the special land use permit Zoom meeting related to the residence at thirty-eight eighty-one Button Gate Court, Lithonia, Georgia, three zero zero three eight. My wife and I attended this meeting on Friday, June twenty-six, six P.M. In this meeting, Tony Martin, Andrea J. Long, and Christine expressed their interest of intent to establish at thirty-eight eighty-one Button Gate Court residence, which is located within five hundred feet of my family residence as a personal care home. They informed all meeting attendees of their desired points of interest to use said residence as a business to house facilitate persons with developmental issues, mentally ill clients. After listening to their permit applicants, discussion points, my wife and I expressed our very strong objections and embedded concerns to this permit, which would allow approval for said business interests in our neighborhood. Additionally, several neighbors attending the call expressed their objective concerns, sentiments as well. Strong objections were related and elaborated to: number one, profound historical experiences with group homes and/or PCH neighborhood home shootings, thefts, illegal drug selling, severely unmaintained property, crowds from visitors, littering, loitering, increased traffic speeding, overall increase in crimes, and et cetera. Number two, neighborhood residential family safety. Applicants home located two houses away from bus stop of school students that attend MLK High School and Brownsville Elementary. Number three, security, potential one to four ratio of caregivers to mental clients. We absolutely do not want our kids exposed to additional safety risk of being victims of unstable persons' negative activities. My wife and I personally have three kids in our household whom are outside freely playing, bike riding daily. Originally, this neighborhood was really nice and family-oriented when my wife and I moved in. Once the group home and/or PCH activities began to establish here, the quality of our community quickly diminished and became very unsafe for residences. Over the last two years, we have observed community which has improved since the City of Stonecrest has implemented ordinances with follow-up compliance, which has decreased the presence of these businesses in our area. Due to the many extremely negative experiences from these types of businesses we have endured during our living in this community for approximately twenty years, we are absolutely and firmly against any support of personal care home permits in our neighborhood. We have advised applicants to consider securing an establishment of this nature in a business district instead. On August fourth, twenty twenty, planning and zoning submitted their denial to the personal care home request. We are requesting your full support and denial of this permit in our area as well. Thank you sincerely for your attention to this matter. The next one is from Nikia Fowler. I am concerned about the rezoning request of thirty-eight eighty-one Button Gate. Our neighborhood already has four of these homes, and the City of Stonecrest has more than twenty, according to the Stonecrest GIS map. Continuing to allow personal care homes and group homes may cause a reduction in the value of our property for homeowners in my neighborhood and could make Stonecrest a less ideal location to attract high-quality restaurants, stores, and entertainment options. Furthermore, personal care homes and group homes have at times been associated with increase in traffic and street parking, unmaintained property, and an accumulation of trash. During two previous meetings, the petitioners indicated that they have never operated a personal care home and do not plan to live in the personal care home. As such, I do not have confidence that the petitioners have the training necessary to keep the clients and the neighborhood families safe. Furthermore, this home is two houses away from a bus stop for the local elementary, middle, and high schools. For all of these reasons and the expressed opinions of so many of my neighbors, I am not in favor of this rezoning request being approved by the city council. Okay, this one is from Maldonia Griffin. I am rescinding my email with further explanation of my opposition to the rezoning permit petition for a personal care home for males diagnosed with mental illnesses at the above address. Please acknowledge receipt of this email. I also ask the version be read at the hearing. My concerns are as follows. Number one, I'm a recent retiree, and the location is with a quarter mile of my home, which puts me at risk. I need to be as safe as possible in this community. It is my understanding that we have had prior incident with a personal care home in the neighborhood that more negatively impacted seniors. Number two, many of us walk in the neighborhood, and this type of group home creates an unsafe environment, considering the prior incident. Additionally, the school bus stop is approximately three hundred and fifty feet from the location, which further puts the children at risk. There is fear for the children if they're outside and not accompanied by an adult. Depending on the severity of the mental illness, what happens if one of the mentally challenged males has a psychotic episode and harms a little boy or little girl? There is also the danger of indecent exposure. The children are vulnerable and should not be subjected to this. Number three, the rezoning request states up to six people for the resident. This is a four to five veteran home, and there is probability that this could end up with ten-plus unrelated residents in the home, which also causes obvious concerns. Number four, there will be increased traffic, including foot traffic by the residents in and out of the neighborhood with employees, healthcare professionals, ambulatory services, visitors, et cetera, which is prone to increased criminal activities, loitering, lurking, fighting, and unkept premises. Number five, the impact on our property values will be devastating with adverse consequences. Undoubtedly, market value would plummet, causing diminished equity and pushing mortgages underwater. There are currently several personal care homes already in this neighborhood, and Stonecrest is general already, and Stonecrest in general already has a high concentration of these twenty-four seven operations. Enough is enough. I guess our subdivisions are becoming even more of a target for this lucrative type operation at the expense of homeowners compromising our safety, which causes frustration and anxiety. This makes the subdivision undesirable to potential new home buyers. This is problematic, and I'm livid. I've been in my home for the past twenty years since it was built and do not choose to live in a neighborhood with yet another personal care home, with this one being for mentally ill males. Unfortunately, this will force homeowners to consider selling during this pandemic. My case is even worse because it will be next to impossible to get a new bank mortgaged as a retiree to rebuy another home, which would be a crisis for me. I sincerely hope this rezoning permit will not be granted, leaving us to fend for ourselves. Thanking you in advance for your acknowledgement that this email was received. This one is from Erica Graham. Dear Ms. Reed and Mr. Turner, this is in regards to the request to rezon thirty-eight eighty-one Button Gate Court in order to open a personal care home. I live at thirty-eight sixteen Button Gate Court, and I'm opposed to this rezoning. I do not feel is the right fit for our community. Our neighborhood is made up of single-family homes, many with children and retired individuals. I have heard from a number of community members who live close to the property at thirty-eight eighty-one, and they fear for the safety of their family members because of the increase of crime a personal care home like this could bring. Having this neighborhood rezoned for group homes would also erode the sense of security I currently feel from a personal property. The extra traffic a personal care home would bring does not fit in with this secluded community and would be much better suited for a neighborhood with better access to public transportation and businesses. On top of safety issues is the effect of the property values of this surrounding neighborhood. Research studies, including one published by the University of Wisconsin Press, show communities that experience an establishment of group home found to decline in property values. Thank you very much for hearing my concerns, Erica Graham. And the last one is from Lennox and Hyacinth Douglas. My name is Hyacinth Douglas. My family and I are living at thirty-eight twenty-one Button Gate for almost twenty years now, and we say no to the personal care home on Button Gate Court. We say no for several reasons. I know the City of Stonecrest and DeKalb County highly promote healthy lifestyle. In my community, many of us uses our subdivision to exercise. We currently feel free to walk, jog, or stroll at varying time of the day. If this personal care home approved, it will surely change this freedom for me and the rest of my neighbors. The property is only two houses away, approximately three hundred and fifty feet from the bus stop for the local elementary, middle, and high schools. Children may no longer be able to freely play outside without increased parental fears for their safety, especially during this time of the pandemic. Outside play is the only option many of us have to allow our children an outlet. The owners of this home are projecting four to six mentally unstable male residents, which may not be conducive to children freely playing nor women freely walking and taking in other forms of exercise. If this move is approved, it could negatively affect all of our property values. Realtors may not show their clients, our neighborhood, and potential buyers may be less inclined to move here when the community learns of this new change. And the time is up.
Alright, Madam Clerk, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard those opposed. Was there any time for the support, Madam Clerk? Or Mr. Wheeler? Or uh, Mr. Wheeler?
Uh, there was um, there was basically a minute left for them to speak.
Okay, um, Mr. Martin.
I'm sorry, I'm I apologize. I'm sorry. No, they their time was up. So no, they have don't have time to rebut. I apologize. Sorry about that.
No worries. Okay, um. I'm gonna move that we exit the uh, uh, public hearing. Have a second?
Second.
All right, properly moved in second, District One.
Aye.
District Two.
Aye.
Three.
Aye.
District Four.
Aye.
District Five.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. All right, um. So Mr. Wheeler from here, uh, and uh, Attorney Hazard.
Um, I mean, it's the same thing as you can uh, when you get down to a new business, uh, either approve, deny or uh, defer the application.
All right, okay, um, that is where we're uh, headed folks. We've already now we're at new business. We've seen the Pinola Shoals uh, restoration project. We moved that to presentation. And uh, we are now at the uh, letter B for approval of the Slup twenty zero zero one. Um, I think this is Councilman George Turner. Mr. Turner, what's your pleasure?
Um, Mayor and Council, I've listened to so many of the resident of this area. You only uh, received a snippet from the ones who made public comments, but I've received probably over sixty emails that I'd be forward mostly all of them to uh, clerk and to Mr. Wheeler, just as comments from the community and they did not make it clear that they wanted that's public comment. But the neighbors are very involved in what's going on here. Uh, I've been following this application uh, for the last couple of months as well. And it is my understanding that it is um, in violation of the distance requirement from another uh, personal care home. Uh, and also understand that this is a single family neighborhood. And we uh, make exceptions and give special land use permits for um, some personal care homes under very special conditions. I don't think they've met these conditions. And the other condition is that uh, we made it clear. A matter of fact, I submitted the um, information for the resolution to require the owner to occupy uh, the property that they're living in. Um, this will require in any situation, some serious supervision. And the owner of the property is someone that we could hold accountable for getting that professional supervision. So since they have not uh, met those two qualifiers in particular, uh, I'm gonna support staff's recommendation that we deny this.
Motion is yours, Mr. Uh, Turner, Councilman Turner.
Um, Mayor, I move that we deny this application for special land use permit two zero dash zero zero one, three eight eight one Button Gate Court.
Right, properly moved. Have a second.
Second.
Properly moved and second. District One.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we're gonna go to discussion first?
Yes, sir.
Are we? Okay, I I just wanna ask uh, Mr. Wheeler a couple of questions again in regards to this project, uh, in particularly what uh, Councilman Turner, George Turner said about the uh, violations. That it the distance violation is is or is not met?
Uh, it does not meet it's under our zoning, under our uh, criteria. Uh, to Mr. Young's uh, uh, comment uh, earlier about uh, staff interpretation of a community living arrangement and what the state considers a community living arrangement. Uh, the you mean the the state uh, considers the community living arrangement and a personal care and ought to be two separate things. Uh, but under this Stonecrest zoning ordinance, a community living arrangement and personal care home are the same thing. Uh, so therefore we review them as a personal care home. Uh, so no matter how the state reviews them, uh, City of Stonecrest reviews a community living arrangement uh, to be a personal care home. Uh, so the fact that there is a community living arrangement, uh, AKA a personal care home uh, within within a thousand feet of this subject property, uh, it it triggers it not be it does not meet that requirement. Uh, so therefore it doesn't meet that criteria. Uh, so that's why staff was stating that it it failed to meet that supplemental regulation uh, required by all personal care homes to be within uh, to be at least a thousand feet away from another personal care home uh, in the city.
And uh, is is that the reason why they're in front of us now?
Uh, no, they're they're in front of us now because.
Uh, but my point is this, um, if they doesn't meet the requirements, then why are they in front of us now if that's the case?
Uh, because again, they they're everybody can ask for uh, for approval. I mean, you can always uh, apply for a special land experiment. Uh, is again, we can't just directly say, no, you can't apply. You can apply um, as as much as you want to. Uh, again, staff, uh, during the whole pandemic, staff didn't 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 make the determination and and follow and find out about it after they doing their initial review of the application and found out that they didn't meet their requirement. Um, previously, as you as you spoke, as we if you guys reviewed before, um, you've you've made uh, uh, you've made uh, you've done approval for other personal care homes uh, based off specific conditions criteria. Uh, again, so staff has been determined that you can apply. Staff can't tell you that you cannot apply. Uh, we can just accept it, but it'll be up to the city council, either yea or nay or 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 defer the application.
Okay, and then the second thing is what Councilman Turner mentioned as well in regards to whether the owner have to actually live on the prop on these type of premises. Is is that is that our actual ordinance or is it not?
Yes, sir. Yes, it's the owner size operator. So the owner or the operator of the of the of the personal care home has to live on the property.
Okay, so just to be clear, just to be clear, it could be the owner or the operator, not just the owner.
Yeah, yeah, yes, sir. Yeah, yes, sir. That is, we are, we are working to uh, to clarify that as at this point in time as uh, yes, sir, that's correct. I don't need.
Okay, so we need you need to clarify that going forward too, so that that if if it's the case that is an owner, then they don't come before city council and waste their time and our efforts on 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 these type uh, uh, facilities. But I will say this and I will now say this again. You know, if not in our community, then where? We have to support each other. We have all types of people in our community again. So whether you mentally ill or you old or whatever, we shouldn't be seeking to drive these people, these people out of our community. This makes no sense to me. And we when we have the opportunity to say yes to a facility of this type, we should look very closely at ways to say yes as opposed to ways to say no. So you know, I understand the cares of the community, but this is where Officer Farrell and his group comes uh, comes in uh, to play where we have to regulate these facilities so that the community don't even know they're there. And that's in 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 most of the cases I've seen, that's what's happening, but there are some bad apples that give the entire industry a bad name. But our code enforcement has to be on top of these type situations to make certain like with Airbnbs and all these other uses is that communities not are not even aware that they exist, for instance. Uh, with Airbnbs, like it's a big deal in the parks of Stonecrest. But there are six Airbnbs in this area that we found out about that nobody even knew about only but one. So it's because they blend into the community. And so this is what we need to go to 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 ensure going forward. However, in this case, we just gotta make certain that they meet the requirements before they come to city council and that need to be made clear to them. Thanks.
Okay.
May I add that we do allow for personal care homes? It's just that we don't wanna see uh, over proliferation of personal care homes in any community. And that is what our rules uh, regulate. There are some communities that says zero personal care homes and there are others that have no regulations. And we just have some regulation in DeKalb County and in the city of Stonecrest that says we can have a certain numbers following our own guidelines. And we do make bring clarity to our guideline because there is some ambiguity in some of it, but not here.
Right, and that's why I asked about the distance requirement first because that is the uh, that's the factor that determines whether we are proliferating or not. Because if you have a distance requirement of a mile or two miles and then that that's basically saying that every two miles, we are now able to put these type of facilities. So you're right. I agree with you a hundred percent. We need to fix that in our ordinances to make certain that is clear and that might be something we need to put on city council agenda uh, in the coming weeks. So we can move forward with this.
Second.
I do. I have a question really quickly. Um, Mr. Wheeler, is it not on the Slup application or is it not? Is the distance not somewhere where the applicant is well aware um, before they submit their paperwork? Cause I thought that I it's not?
No, it's in the supplemental regulations. Again, the your special land use permit is again is specific to these due those twenty criteria. And one of the criteria is asking, does it meet all the other regulations set forth by the city ordinance? Again, when the city council previously took uh, allow for the the other applicant, other personal care home that did not meet that requirement and so forth. And I don't wanna get into talking about that. Uh, it was established then that the staff could not did not could not take an application. That you can apply for, you can apply for an application as much as you want to. Staff will still have to take it in and we'll 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 let we'll we'll still proceed. But it'll be city council if they want to proceed with their own rules and regulations, either based off special conditions and special criteria. And if they want to say yea, nay or 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 denial of the of the application. So as for it, again, that's why, you know, they may they may not meet the distance requirement. City council can meet make the can make determination says, okay, well, they may not make the make meet the the distance requirement. This use is required is a is a uh, is a need or so forth or some other uh, other information that you may deem necessary to approve the application. Um, so that's why.
Sure. Yeah, no, no, I understand that part. I just was curious on um, if it was if that information was made available so that applicants would know that kind of on the front end. Um, so they, you know, some kind of save everybody some time.
No, I mean, it's it's not. I mean, because it part again, that's part of the supplemental regulations uh, that you know, that she wants you get once you get past all just the just the criteria, just for specifically for a Slup, then you'll get to to that point. And most of the time, again, this is kind of like double work on staff's part. Uh, but again, that that criteria is not included specifically in the in the criteria. Um, I'm not too sure if we can make those type of changes. Uh, but we can probably add, we can probably add that to the to the to the application that says, hey, uh, before you apply, you wanna make sure that you meet these extra uh, these extra requirements uh, set forth by the zoning orders. And that's not a part, that's not a part of the criteria which you need to get approval from the city council.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should explore some ideas, something like that, just so, you know, it helps everyone.
But uh, Mayor, again, uh, Attorney Hazard.
Yes.
Am I correct in saying that if city council wanted to approve five houses next to one another with ten apps with ten uh, people in each house, we could do it legally. It's just that we violate our own rules and they become uh, useless after that. But there's nothing that would stop us from giving a special land use permit to houses that are adjacent to each other.
Um, well, technically in order to to grant the special land use permit, the requirement has to be met. So the council has to find that the criteria that um, Mr. Wheeler laid out in his presentation that that those criteria were met. If they are not met, then council cannot um, issue the permit. If council issues the permit without meeting those criteria, um, then it's uh, subject to likely reversal or rehearing by a superior court.
Okay.
Okay, counsel, any further? Still in discussion?
I just I guess one other question is that so the applicant has to, I guess, meet all the criteria. There's like it can meet three or four of them or five or six. They have to meet all of them. Am I correct?
Correct.
What was the uh, what was the issue with uh, uh, the 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 owner of the manager uh, living on premise?
So this is a home occupation and the definition of home occupation, um, it requires the owner operator lives on premises.
Okay, and that's not happening here? Mr. Wheeler?
No, you have to say, no, no, sir, no.
Okay. Still in discussion? Anybody else? All right, seeing none. District One.
Nay.
District Two.
Nay.
District Three.
Can you repeat the motion, please? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the 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 motion was to deny the application.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
They might wanna do a rebound.
Let's do a read. Yeah, right. To ensure we legal here.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
Uh, if I may restate the motion. I move that we deny the special land use permit two zero dash zero zero one, three eight eight one Button Gate Court.
Okay. All right. Uh, proper moves. There a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none. District One.
Nay.
District Two.
Aye.
District Three.
Aye.
District Four.
Aye.
District Five.
Aye.
Mayor, nay. All right. Um, go number C. Approve the final plat for Parks of Stonecrest, Part D, Phase Two.
I'm sorry, did you all vote on the withdrawal for the Hill and Dell Road?
That's um.
Yeah, I'm not voting on that yet.
I'm sorry.
It's coming up uh, on over this, yeah.
Uh, yes, sir. So uh, the final plat is again, is just a the standard final plat for Part D uh, uh, Phase Two of Parks of Stonecrest. Uh, it's been reviewed and approved by staff and has been reviewed and approved by uh, DeKalb County G I S. Only thing it needs uh, is official approval from the city council and then it'll be reported on to the uh, DeKalb County Superior Court to prepare to be uh, recorded. Now, any questions of staff?
Uh, floor is open, staff. I'm excuse. Floor is open, council.
Um. I didn't quite uh, understand what you were saying. Uh, are you saying that this is just routine for getting this done?
Yes, yes, sir. It is. For for all final plats, again, we have to come, it has to come before the city council. Uh, it's been reviewed by staff and have been approved by the Cat County G I S. And then all it needs to do is it'd be an official approval from the city council. And then mayor will sign it and then myself will sign and then it'll take it to the Cat County Superior Court uh, for it to be recorded and then given back to city uh, to city for its records. And it'd be the official uh, final plat uh, for that subdivision.
Okay, I apologize. This is another one that we didn't have a chance to go through since we got it late. Uh, this Part D Phase Two that is uh, in the parks of Stonecrest. And what stage are they in the development of that?
Uh, they're already doing, they're finishing up. They're actually building out homes right now for Phase One. Again, they're asking to just uh, start doing Phase Two.
Okay, and once that's uh, filed, there can be no changes?
Uh, yes, sir. And any changes, any changes, uh, they will have to come back and make those changes again and those and they'll come right back before city council. Uh, but most time you won't get change in the final plat is because that's all tied to zoning density requirements and so forth. So hardly ninety percent chances day, once the final plat is final, it's it's final. There's no changes with that. Unless individual, so probably wanna start making changes requests, which will go through the variance process. Uh, but as far as major changes, wholesale changes, no, sir, that that will not happen.
I think I've asked this question before, but the this is a final plat and I assume that was a preliminary plat, but you said we don't do preliminary plats.
Yes, sir. So preliminary plat is your L D P. Uh, that's that's your preliminary plat. That's where they, that's what we do here in the city. Uh, we don't do, we technically our preliminary plat is your L D P. Uh, because they'll go ahead and go through the process of review, engineering, land development, uh, planning and zoning, uh, stormwater, uh, DeKalb County, uh, uh, water and sewer and and G I S. And then once he, once all that gets uh, gets done, uh, you have your preliminary plat, which is your L D P. And then once it gets to a point where they where they finish developing grading, they'll submit a a final plat, which is again, is the exact same thing as your preliminary plat. They'll be sent to the Cat County G I S staff review just to make sure it matches the L D P, L D P. Um, G I S will issue uh, um, street names, uh, addresses and so forth. And once that's been approved, submit back to staff again to give to city council for final approval. And then once it's been approved, mayor will sign off, the staff will sign off and then submit to the Cat County Superior Court uh, for it to be recorded. Uh, they will have a copy and then the city will have a copy of that.
So the document you're giving us now, final plat, does validate that it matches uh, preliminary?
Yes, sir.
Invitation. Okay.
All right, um, this is uh, has to be uh, District One. Uh, for Councilman Clayton, what's your pleasure?
Uh, uh, motion to approve.
Uh uh motion to approve.
All right, second. All right, um moved in second. Well, any further discussion, uh council? Okay, seeing none, district one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three? District three?
I'm sorry, my audio dropped out. Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Mayor, aye? All right, um the uh housing authority contract with the city of Stonecrest? Here. Uh. Mr. Denmark, do you have that? I know it's included on, should have been included in our packet.
Um I, we looked at that contract, Mr. Mayor. Uh but it it's not an item that I'm necessarily presenting, but uh it was sent to me for review and I did in fact review it.
Okay. And um I mean, I mean, were you fine with it? Pretty much a page and a half?
Yeah, i- 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 it was, it was, we certainly didn't have any concerns with 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 contract and we recommend that the council approve it.
Okay. All right, um have uh said that, council, open for questions?
This man?
Yes, sir.
The contract, I mean, this is a an intergovernmental agreement of of some sorts?
Yes, sir.
Contract, and it literally came to us minutes before this meeting started. I I really, this is one that I think is going to be quite important and it's fresh, and I haven't had a chance to see it. Unless some, the rest of the council has seen it, ready to move on it. I got it.
About a half an hour before the meeting start.
Yeah, I haven't made it to that degree, so.
Okay. Would defer the uh housing and authority contract to the next meeting? Do we need a uh motion for that?
Mayor?
Well, ma- may I ask a question? Before you do that, mayor, is it a contract or I G A?
Yeah, same, uh pretty much on agreement that uh.
I G A is, I I just didn't, I'm just, I'm just, I guess I really want Attorney Denmark to answer that.
It's a, it's a, it's an intergovernmental contract. You can say intergovernmental agreement or intergovernmental contract. Really technically, under the state constitution, it's called an intergovernmental contract. But I mean, it it's just normal platitude, it's fundamentally the same. But it's an intergovernmental contract between the city of Stonecrest and the housing authority.
Just want to be clear. Thank you.
This mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move that we defer the housing authority contract with the city of Stonecrest until the next regular meeting?
Second.
Moving in second, any discussion?
Yes, uh Attorney Denmark, was there something in particular that council should be aware of? Or uh what was the, I mean, the reasoning behind your recommendation that council look at this?
Well, I I believe you should look at at everything, but what I look at it in terms of to make sure that it's legally on all fours. That there are no provisions that are contrary to the law, um and that there is no provision that will compromise the city of Stonecrest's position. Um and that's what I'm not looking at it for the business deal or see whether it's a good idea from a public policy perspective. But rather, I'm only looking at it to make sure that it's legally on all fours. Now, the council would want to look at it to make sure that it's a good deal and something that you want to do from a public policy perspective. But I never look at it towards that eye because that's within the province of the elected officials and not the attorney.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any further? Seeing none. The uh deferral to the next city council meeting?
Are you, are we voting now?
Yes, sir.
Oh, aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Aye. On all business, we adopt the Stonecrest Transportation Master Plan. Uh we had our present presentation today. And um council, the was open for discussion and vote. You have all the uh experts here. What's your pleasure?
This man?
Yes, sir.
You made a presentation of some things that have been added, and there were quite a few. For which I personally want to take a look at in terms of some changes on the map. Before I can uh act on this, that's just my two cents.
Ms. Donald?
Um. Councilman Turner, the uh the the map, the references to the map changes uh were based on uh information presented for uh existing path trail. Uh that needed to be updated. The information that was provided was um not the latest information. So um it was requested to update that on the map. So it was essentially uh background information for um the existing trail network. And so uh, you know, we want to make sure that we had the latest information that's incorporated. And again, it doesn't uh impact any of the uh character or the recommendations of the plan.
So basically, you're saying that the the paths that were, that are on the map now don't exist. So you guys are going back in and going to take those paths off and and we've moved forward.
Yeah, they're just, yeah, they're real uh minor revisions just to make sure that those paths are the the latest and uh most uh, you know, up to date information on the maps. And so that we would just update the maps in a plan.
And you would send us a copy of those updates um?
You have the council, we sent them. Sent them earlier today, I think it was, you know, if I'm not mistaken. Um. Uh Mr. Turner, did you see them?
I received a lot of stuff. I don't recall seeing them. I don't recall seeing them myself, mayor, I really don't.
Okay, so um. I'll take a motion to delay the uh adoption of the city transportation master plan until next meeting.
Can I, can I make a comment before we vote on that, please? Um. Although I share the same sentiments um as earlier, I I wanted to mention, though, that some of, some of the other need I have, and we talked about this, Marcus and um. Michael, if you're on, oh, yeah, you're on, there you go. Um I really would like the opportunity to um give my district that kind of uh one-on-one attention. That uh that was given to us to understand this plan. Um you know, we talked about some of the the low cost, but high priority projects that were kind of in the first four years. And then we saw some in the mid, and then we saw some in the long run. Um but most certainly want to get some feedback from the constituents um from district three on what is low cost but high priority on their first four years. And we talked, we kind of talked about um having the ability to be able to make sure that um we, we are able to to hand over something to the constituents and feel like they got something out of it. So, uh and you did thank you very much so for going back into the plan and adding the districts uh next to each of those plant, each of those items. That was very helpful um and help us engage in that kind of conversation. Uh so I would really like the ability to be able to do that. Um although I know that might be a pain point for some, um getting the community involved and making sure they understand, and just making sure they're represented. Um and e- even if that turns into something or turns into nothing, um making sure that when something is produced, that folks feel represented in it is really important. Um so I'd like the opportunity to be able to do that, and I did, I did mention that to you all. And we were not fortunate enough to be able to squeeze that in in the two weeks. Um but I would like the ability, the the opportunity at least to try it one more time, to be able to get folks to really take a look at that that first section, uh to see that district three. Um its needs are kind of placed in there. Um and and specifically, we we kind of talked about the the few things that are there. Um but want to make sure that as we look at what's important and priority for safety and concerns in district three, that what is there um is reflective of the needs, the immediate needs in those first four years.
Ms. Donald or Mr. Hattler?
Marcus, you want to guess that?
Um, yeah, definitely, uh Councilmember Kyle, we we uh heard heard that when we we presented and spoke with you. And, you know, understand that um you you know, you want to go back and 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 uh speak to your constituents about uh some of the recommendations that are being uh recommended, especially in the short term as well. Um so um no, I definitely understand that, wanting to get some, some um, you know, buy-in from your constituents as well, so definitely can understand.
Well, having said that, with the correction to the maps and to the text language, uh and the request from Councilwoman Kabel uh for meeting with her constituents is next meeting, enough time to handle that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, mayor, I don't want Councilwoman Kabel to believe that she alone, I would definitely like to um make my own attempt. Because I did express to Mr. Arnold that I wanted to make sure that district five had done due diligence in the citizens, the constituents coming out as well with some of the pop-up um uh presentations that were done and the opportunities that were afforded. So it's not just Councilwoman Kabel, I I I share that same sentiment.
Ms. Arnold, is there enough time for council district three and five um to do what is requested along with the review of the map uh with uh Councilman Turner uh for the next meeting?
Yes, I believe so, yeah.
Okay. I think that um my uh uh motion is second is still on the table with regards to moving the um uh Stonecrest Transportation Master Plan uh to next scheduled meeting. Has been properly moved in second and we were in discussion. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, um district one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Mayor, aye? The Stonecrest Transportation Master Plan is move for approval to the next register, register, next scheduled uh meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Great job, gentlemen. I uh really enjoy working with the collaborative and you and Ms. Hattler, Ms. Donald, you'll do an outstanding job, outstanding job, always have. All right, um council, is there any um uh is there any uh um request for a mid-year budget adjustment that requires a vote? Uh we just put this on here for, you know, as necessary, but I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see any adjustment that required a vote.
Fair. I didn't see anything that um for the adjustment that requires a vote. Was a couple of things that pop up during the presentation, and that was about the P cards. Um I am interested in getting uh more information on the use of the P cards. In fact, I was not aware we had more than one or two. And that being the case, can we look at the um P card usage for the last couple of years? What would it take to make that happen?
I think that request has already been made, sir, and I think that's uh being worked on, but uh uh unless you're calling it something different. Um and I have to to uh move to Mr. To Mr. Travis Sims and the city clerk. I'm not aware of any P cards being issued in Stonecrest.
Are being used by Stonecrest personnel, uh even with uh um hmm. That, when it popped up, it it just caught my ear. And they mentioned, I think, about three.
So wh- where we are now, um Councilman Turner, uh is the uh any mid-year budget adjustments if necessary for vote? If we go to something different, uh uh suggest that we can have a conversation with Ms. Iris Settle and Mr. Travis Sims and the city clerk. Uh if we want to do something different than what is happening here.
Okay, well, it came out of that discussion, the reason I brought it up, and I was reminded. So uh since you said it's already been uh addressed, then I'll just follow up on that item.
Okay. All right, uh moving to see the R Z twenty dash one. And we've heard from the uh representative, and if I'm, if I'm not out of line, uh Mr. Turner, um Mr. Rob Turner, uh we move for withdrawal?
Uh yes, mayor, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw the application as requested by the applicant for the R Z dash twenty dash zero zero one, sixty eighty-six and sixty-one hundred Hillendale Route Drive to rezone the subject properties from M R one to M R two and future land use character to urban neighborhood of the development of one hundred and twenty units of workforce housing.
All right, I'll second that. Uh any further discussion, council? Uh seeing none, uh district one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
Mayor, aye? Um thank you, Ms. Battle, Attorney Battle, we'll uh we'll reconvene afterwards. Uh number D is COVID nineteen cares act. Um I can give a little bit of update on that along with um Ms. Settle. Um. The cities have been in intense negotiation with the county. Um so that uh we can uh release, excuse me, so that they will release, the county will release the actual negotiated funds. Um and uh this week, that should be uh completed. So since we're close to where we're going now, um uh and I'm glad we 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 had an opportunity to to get some more research, um I'm going to call the committee meeting uh so that we can start to determine how we lay this out and be able to present to council. Uh there are some other uh cities that we were able to research along with how they were doing things. And um uh the categories that they used and and specifically following the uh the uh COVID nineteen cares act. Uh so uh we have two council members uh on that committee, which is Councilman Clinton and Councilman Rob Turner. Um and we'll make a time this week so that we can start and put that information together and have it ready for you uh uh council by the next meeting. Because by the, by the time we meet uh for the regular scheduled meeting, um uh we anticipate from the county that that vote will be taken, which is probably tomorrow, if uh if I recall correctly. Um and uh we can start to uh um, you know, get our COVID nineteen money in and have it allocated properly and approved by council. Uh do I have any questions?
I was able to uh, go ahead.
Now, did I hear you said that the the county is going to vote on this on tomorrow?
Uh if not, a, or a special call meeting.
Okay, so I was uh, it was made clear to us at the last meeting that they were going to vote following that meeting.
And some more negotiations came into involve between the county and um the county municipal association leaders.
Oh, okay, oh. All right, I I I'll move on with that. We were told that that was not, it was not negotiable. We had to take it or leave it, and we voted for it right quick and moved on, but okay, I'll move on.
That's uh this, that's uh, that's what happened with us, so um uh there was some other top end things that uh that's been happening between the CEO and the uh commissioners. Uh but we've turned in our part uh with regards to what, you know, what was negotiable, what was not negotiable, so that that statement stands correct.
I've got just two questions. Um are we still in the opportunity to take advantage of some of those recent negotiations with um the county municipal association and whatever changes they may be bringing or or agreeing upon um at the county? Or are we outside of that picture? Or are we outside of that picture because we've already signed, sealed and delivered?
So it's not us really particular, um, Councilwoman Campbell. Uh, the negotiations really is between, uh, CEO and the Board of Commissioners. Uh, so he has what we've all, as a twelve cities have agreed upon. And, um, uh, that's where, that's where the negotiation is.
So, I mean, I guess I'm still asking if something changes, are we able, are we able to benefit from those changes? Will they be applied to us? I guess is my question. If anything changes in those negotiations from whatever is presented to the commission tomorrow or whenever they vote, are we able to take advantage of any of those benefits?
Certainly, because it's one for all. It's not that they're going to do one city over the other. It's for, it's, it's, it's for all.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought I heard you say something about the cities were negotiating.
And, and Mr. Mayor, just for the council certification, my office is still, um, participating in, in the dialogue with the, uh, with county leadership in there.
So our interest is watched. Uh, so that we're, uh, we're, we're in good shape.
So we won't miss out on anything by having signed immediately and there are further negotiations?
No, we had to sign immediately to, 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 to get our part done. The, the, the simple fact of the matter is that they owe us over six million dollars and we're going to get it from them. Um, and that's, that's, uh, we got any, you know, further details with regards to that, uh, Mr. Denmark will, uh, will, will keep us informed.
Awesome. And then my second, oh, sorry.
I said from a city's standpoint, we've done our part.
Got you. Um, my second question was, I did have a chance to read through the I G A since last meeting and this one. And there are some really, um, tight auditing, reporting requirements, even, um, how to set the account up uh, in the bank, uh, something to the effect of you can use the same bank, but there must be a separate account. There's a lot of accounting and record keeping for it. Um, will the committee be discussing who is taking on certain roles that are explicitly detailed in the I G A in order to make sure that we have all the reports in on time, that the accounts are set up correctly, that we know who we're accountable to and for what and, and when. It was very detailed, lots and lots of, lots of detail on, on that front. So is the committee going to be handling that or should we expect staff to kind of give us a report on who's doing what?
Uh, the committee will set it up and then we'll have, uh, uh, staff to make sure reports properly.
Uh, one other thing. I noticed some deadlines in there and they said some of those deadline could be changed, but it's probably the end of this year. So I'm just making a comment that, uh, time is of the essence. So we have got to get moving.
One hundred percent agree. The people that are eligible for the COVID nineteen cares act money or they're, um, they're in a position where they want us to move fast. Hoping that, uh, council will, it, it, will adhere to that. But we'll have everything, uh, in line and correct, uh, so that we can, um, so that we can act fast. But as I said earlier, we have two council members as on that committee. So you can, you can, you can rest assured it's going to happen properly.
Okay.
You.
Sorry.
Okay. I just have one question. I've had several constituents ask me this and I, 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 I said that I would ask you. When, when the announcement came about the COVID money and, um, there was a, uh, Channel Two News piece, uh, concerning the Arizona's piece, uh, about using COVID money to help Arizona's get reopened. I see that reopen. I just want to make sure that I'm saying what is absolutely actual. None of Stonecrest's money went to help reopen Arizona's. Or, okay, okay. All right. I, I felt like I could say that, um, but again, trust but verify. So thank you.
Worries. Okay. Anymore? All right. Thank you. Last issue is contract management. Um, there's been some conversations regarding, uh, a couple of contracts that we've had. And, um, Mr. Thibodeau, I'm gonna call on you to weigh on, weigh in on the situation.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Um, basically there was a question about, um, the appropriateness of approving these contracts or, uh, the mayor entering into these contracts. Um, there was another, uh, there were questions that were filed and, um, and that the council expected some answers to. Um, in, in my review of this situation, I found that the fact that the contracts with Sean DePalma and Brenda Cornelius are non-competitive, um, does not mean that they're automatically eliminated from the sole source or single source categories. For each of these contracts, particularly in the case of, uh, Mr. DePalma, and it could also be applied in the case of Ms. Cornelius. It would be considered that, it could be considered that each of these contractors is singularly qualified to deliver the services, um, sought in each contract. And if those requirements are met, then the subject of obtaining additional quotes before entering into those contracts would be moved. So what I'm saying is that just because these were non-competitive contracts does not mean that they would not fall into a sole source category. As in with the, uh, case of Mr. DePalma, he was continuing to consult on programs that he set up while he was Director of Parks and Rec. So he's uniquely qualified for that particular, uh, engagement. And for the reasons that the mayor sought Ms. Cornelius's, um, services, she's also, uh, particularly qualified for that particular role. So as far as, um, asking for additional quotes, if they are looking, if the mayor was looking at these as he cannot find these services elsewhere or these could, these services could not be delivered, um, satisfactorily, um, by seeking those opportunities in the greater market, then it's within his, uh, role to consider those sole sources and, um, enter into those contracts.
Are there any questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Thibodeau, um, would you please describe according to our purchasing policy, what are the requirements to, um, uh, determine a sole source procurement over any other type of procurement?
Basically, the, um, the purchasing policy, when it comes to sole source procurement, uh, basically, um, it states that, uh, if the, and I'll, I'll have it up here. How it can the services be delivered, um, through some other, um, oh, I'm sorry. With a sole source contract is saying that is available when the good services or professional services are limited to one source or when they must be obtained for us from a specific manufacturer and valid competition among dealers does not exist. And so in the case of Mr. DePalma, he's the former director of Parks and Rec. He set up those programs and the reason for behind his contract was to advise current management on fulfilling those obligations or, um, properly setting up those programs that he planned for and set up as while he was director. So, you know, that's just an example of why this would be a sole source contract because, um, is tho- those, that particular expertise was not available elsewhere.
Yeah, understood. So, um, are, first, let me ask you for clarification. Are you saying that these two contracts were procured under sole source?
I'm saying that even though they're not in the competitive, um, arena, that when the mayor made his decision, he could consider those to be sole source contracts.
Yeah, I get that part. I'm just, I'm asking, are you saying that they are sole source procurements?
I'm saying that both of them could be presented as sole source procurements. I'm not the one who made the decision and executed the contract. Um, to, um, um, advising or, or for lack of a better word, opining on what decisions and what, um, was available for the mayor to make his decision.
Okay. So basically they qualify for a sole source.
Correct.
Okay. So under the, that section of the policy, it also states that you have to provide a justification for the sole source. Um, and when you provide that justification for the sole source procurement to the purchasing agent after the approval by the city manager or the council. So we don't currently have a city manager, uh, so that would have to come to the other body that is mentioned, which is the city council. So if they are sole source procurements, that's fine. Um, we just need to make sure that whatever procurement that they're falling under, the policy is followed. So it does explicitly say the user must provide the justification for the sole source procurement to the purchasing agent after approved by the city manager or council. So if it is, if those, if they are such, um, sole source procurements, then we would be looking for then, uh, where the approval, justification was written and then the approval was given. Uh, so again, what we were asking for under contract management was to make sure that the policy is followed regardless of what method of procurement is chosen. Uh, and on this same note, um, I had submitted a request, um, from you for a report on the twenty twenty contracts. Um, so I can, well, I, I'll wait until we kind of get that report and kind of be able to look through it and maybe have further discussion at another meeting. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that we were, we, that the request was understood that what we're asking for is whatever procurement method was followed or was chosen, that the policy for that method was followed. Uh, so whether you make it under non-competitive, uh, and it's three quotes and a requisition, or you say it's sole source, um, it needs justification, um, to be sent, uh, for approval. So we're just still looking for those supplemental documents.
Understood. And as far as the request is concerned, I'm actively working with city staff to obtain those contracts.
Sure. I knew you were in, in the middle of the budget review too. So it's understood.
Do we have a need for an executive session? Seeing none. Uh, Mr. City Attorney, you have any comments?
Nothing received and Mr. Mayor.
All right. Madam Clark.
I have no.
Seeing, District One.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have, um, little to say. I just, I just want to reiterate my stance on development in the city of Stonecrest. Uh, particularly, uh, you know, I think our role as council members and as representative of the people is to ensure that the people get what they want, whether they know it or not. And, uh, we have rules and policies in order and we're trying to, you know, just make certain all these rules are in place so that we can, you know, follow that path, uh, to a positive end. Having said that, you know, when we have opportunities for developments and growth, we have to consider what our future look like. The comprehensive plan is part of that. You know, our, uh, master transportation plan, the parks plan, all these plans are part of what our future should look like in the city of Stonecrest so that council can consider beforehand what we're going to go into the future. We can't continue to leave our parks or segments of our population because of stigma. So we got to get past that as, as, as council. And, and again, I was just speaking for myself. So it's not to offend anybody, but the truth is the truth. And so we have to move forward and, you know, developments like the one on, um, Hillendale as well as community developments, we should certainly take a, probably take another look at how we deal with these and particularly politicize things so that we don't have to make a lot of on-the-spot decisions. So for instance, like, uh, Councilman George Turner was talking about proliferations and stuff like that. So we have a policy that says a, uh, you have to have a certain distance between certain types of establishment. That's right, that right there is our way of addressing the proliferation. And so when somebody come before council, we could already be beforehand decide by policy and not by nature what should happen next. But, uh, other than that, this one has nothing else to report on. Looking forward to the developments, all the developments in District One, including the Honda Place and including, um, um, our, uh, uh, industrial park, La Tony Industrial Park, um, uh, uh, Home, Home Depot and some more stuff coming our ways, including the Circle K and some other developments and warehouses that are coming our way. This is all good for our city.
All right. District Two.
Um, Georgia's a hotspot with this COVID nineteen. So please be careful, wear your mask, stay safe.
Excellent, excellent. District Three.
Welcome back to all the students in, in this virtual learning environment. Praying for all the parents while we're getting adjusted back to a regular schedule. I just want everybody to stay safe and, uh, be patient with your teachers and the staff at the schools, uh, as well as the students trying to get a hold of everything. So just laugh a lot and pray even harder. That's it for D three.
D four.
Before you go to bed tonight, say an extra prayer for the Joanna family and they will make a speedy recovery and get through this. And, uh, I must mention the census on Saturday. Don't forget to join us, ten to four as they're having the, uh, recycled event at the new city hall, uh, spot. And I know some people will do the census because District Four asked them to do it. Some people won't do it because District Four asked them to do it. Uh, my point is that all of us have different influences. And it cannot be on just a couple of us. I appreciate Councilwoman Campbell for joining the committee and Councilwoman Graham joining the committee. But this is to cover all of Stonecrest. So I'm asking all city council and mayor to kick it up a notch with promoting the census. We've got some new material coming in. I will gladly share it with you. And we have some of it on site on Saturday, but it's about getting the word out and encouraging people to participate. Because there is genuinely, I'm convinced that there's an effort to let us uncount ourselves. And we're stepping right into the trap. Folks, don't wind up being a zero person, uncounted for the next ten years. Please count.
Excellent. District Five.
All right. Well, uh, as Councilman Turner said, census, yay. Councilwoman Campbell talked about the educational piece as one who's in this virtual learning fire. Don't fan the flames, guys. Ask for you to pack your patience because just like one size doesn't fit all for your students, don't fit, one size doesn't fit all for your teachers. There's a learning curve for everyone involved, from the parents to the teachers, to the students and the administrators, district level personnel. Everybody has to be patient. And we all have to remember, we're in this together. And as long as we do it together, we'll be okay. Um, I would like to say the voting piece is concerning me, um, equally as much as the census piece. Uh, my desire is to see nobody at the polls on election day because we have all voted during early voting. Pack your patience, get your lawn chair, your umbrella. Let's get out there and early vote or drop your absentee ballot off, drop your absentee ballot off on Memorial Drive. Uh, I know, Mayor, we have our, um, ballot box, I think outside of city hall right now. I believe we have one at Exchange Park and we'll probably have a couple more. Um, but I say if you can get your ballot quickly, get it over to Memorial Drive, then you take the mail completely away. We have to vote like our lives depend on it. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Council. Um, a couple of three things. I'll be brief. Um, one is that, uh, uh, we start by sending out prayers to Liz Joanna and his family. Um, staff that was on here, um, were with Liz every day. And that is the, the hardest working brother in show business, period. And, um, uh, that's a man that cares about his family, uh, deeply. His daughter, his wife is the same as, as you all do with your, your, your husband and your children. So, um, what we're talking about is really nothing to, 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 uh, Liz is, is dealing with right now. So let's, uh, Councilman George Turner said, you know, let's keep Liz and his family uplifted, you know, in your prayers because he's that kind of man and he would do the same. Um, second is that, uh, I wanted to certainly still give a hearty welcome to, uh, Camille Taylor, Tasha White, Geo Scruggs, um, and, uh, Travis Sims has been here. And certainly welcome, um, Ms. Janet Jackson and, um, Uh Ms. Janet Jackson, and uh I encourage council to uh communicate with Ms. Jackson. And I'll start having conversation with her. This is a a a lady of uh great experience and knowledge. And 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 she could, she can help us all. I'll end by saying this, uh council, I'm doing the best I can. I'm doing the best I can. Uh uh we can't fight pandemic, can't fight each other. Can't fight what's happening with Metro Green, can't come in here and fight. We we're on the verge of making the greatest history in the world. And I'm I'm trying to do my part, best I can, put egos aside, put work ethic aside. Uh 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 some of you aren't considering I'm working eighty hours a week for twenty thousand a year. And 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 all the sacrifices that I personally made to get us this far. And all the sacrifices that you all are making now, but make no doubt. If I were not doing what I've done in the past and present, none of us would have a seat here at the table, none of us. And the thing that 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 hurts me the most is that the amount of effort. The amount of energy, the amount of communications that I'm trying to put in to make sure we get the best that we can get. I just want you to appreciate it. There's no, there's there's nothing in this other for me and and I don't know about from you all, uh but legacy. We have a chance to become the new Black Wall Street if we work together. But I can't keep on wrestling y'all over every little itty-bitty process thing that you're you're looking for. That's not who I am. And I'm hoping Ms. Jackson can can help steer us right in that in that direction because she has the experience. Uh we come from different backgrounds, we come from uh, you know, different areas. Uh I I'm more than, more than sure that uh between Ms. Jackson and and Ms. Brenda Cornelius, we can. We can right whatever wrong ship that you all think that we have. But I want you to look at the glass half full. Here we are, still doing well, paving roads, building corporations, relocating people, relocating people to Stonecrest. Uh uh building warehouses uh in a pandemic, in the worst thing since the the swine flu. And we are still, still thriving. Think of what's better, we can continue to be. If we at least just come to the center, and that's what I've been trying to do with you all. That's why I've been putting people in place that can help. That's why I take on everything extra that we have, that that we have to do. Um just like the rest of the citizens and just like you all, I get frustrated sometimes. So those of you that are listening, there's no use in sending me any hate mail. That's not gonna do anything for you. Because there there are folks working behind the scenes like myself, and I'll 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 put uh Councilman Rob Turner in this. That we're trying to 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 do some things that are unprecedented, uh to help this city with regards to uh this whole uh uh Metro Green priest. So uh uh we 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 have this situation in court this week. We 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 believe that uh uh we got the best council to be able to make that happen. And and the thing that I want citizens to know, no one, no council person, no elected official. Um uh no staff person wants to see you and your family in harm's way. Uh I want you all to sincerely understand that is the case. Uh we inherited all of this when we came to Stonecrest. That area was, it's been light industrial for fifteen years. We've just been around for three. So there is no intent other than to make sure that we can do the best we can to not only just repair uh that situation. But to serve all of Stonecrest, and that's our job as mayor and council. So all I'm asking is to come to the center, council. And I'll put everything in place to be able to to do the best I can with the uh with uh what was what's been given to me. Um with that, I will continue to extend the courtesy of uh uh ending the meeting, uh you know, through a vote. Um so uh this meeting is now adjourned. We have a second.
Second.
All right, District One.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
District Four.
Aye.
District Five.
Aye.
Mayor.
Aye.
You all have a safe evening. Take care.
Everybody be safe.